I open this meeting of the Committee of the Whole Parliament to consider Stage Two of the Cost of Living: Tenant Protection Scotland Bill. For the duration of these proceedings, I am the convener of the committee. In dealing with amendments, members should have the marshalled list and the groupings of amendments. The division bell will sound and proceedings will be suspended for five minutes for the first division of the afternoon. The period of voting for the first division will be 45 seconds. Thereafter, I will allow a voting period of one minute for the first division after a debate. Members who wish to speak in the debate on any group of amendments should press their request to speak buttons or press R as soon as possible after I call the group. A member should now refer to the marshalled list of amendments.
Convener.
Point of order, Jeremy Balfour.
Thank you. I wonder if I could seek your guidance, convener. I lodged amendments about Section Two of this bill, and the Parliament officials have said I was not allowed to submit them. Is it the policy of the Parliament that certain amendments are not acceptable which take out certain parts of the bill, once it has been passed at stage one? Which means whatever this Parliament believes of a certain section of the bill, it will always remain, even if we vote against it?
I thank Mr. Balfour for his point of order. Rule 9.10.5(c) states that an amendment isn't admissible if it is inconsistent with the general principles of the bill, as agreed by the Parliament. That is, if the amendment would reverse, substantially alter, or render ineffective a principal purpose of the bill. Where a bill is introduced with only one or two principal purposes, an amendment to leave out or substantially alter that purpose, or one of those purposes would not normally be admissible. So I go back to...
And that is, how would then the Parliament remove sections of the bill? You can't.
Not in committee.
For clarity, Mr. Balfour, you can put an amendment in to remove a section unless it would be a wrecking amendment. Now, we move on to operation of the rent cap, and I call Amendment One in the name of Jeremy Balfour, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. I point out that if Amendment Twenty-One in the group entitled Application of the Rent Cap is agreed to, then I cannot call Amendments Twenty-Two and Twenty-Seven due to preemption. So Jeremy Balfour, to move Amendment One and speak to all amendments in the group.
Thank you, convener, and I would like to move Amendment One and Amendment Thirty-Two, which are both in my name. We had a very helpful debate, I think, yesterday afternoon at stage one. And there was lots of evidence given in that debate that the way to control the rights of tenants is not necessarily to control the rents that landlords can charge. We all understand that we are in a situation where there is financial hardship facing many people here in Scotland. Both landlords and tenants are facing difficult times. But the methodology of simply saying, "We're going to freeze all rents and have a controlled section as this bill does", well, actually, in my view, and I think in the opinion of most housing associations and experts from us, causes greater damage rather than less benefit. During speeches, my colleagues, Myrtle Fraser and Stephen Kerr, gave examples of what's happened in other countries, whether that is Dublin, Berlin, and Stockholm. We have seen the situation in those three countries, see more people becoming homeless, less housing available, and the situation grow worse. Valued by this amendment, Amendment Thirty-Two goes to the heart of what this Parliament should be trying to do. We agree action needs to be taken, and we are disappointed that the Scottish Government have taken so long to do anything. But surely, to do the wrong thing is not the answer. And in fact, the two, the Minister and the Cabinet Secretary, just a few months ago, were arguing exactly what I am arguing today. And what they were saying is that this is not the way forward. We need action from government. And my view is...
John Mason.
I thank the Member for giving way. I mean, would he accept that this is a temporary freeze or rent cap that is only up to the end of March? That does not affect housing associations, but I accept they are interested after April.
Jeremy Balfour.
Well firstly, the point I was making was that ministers and Cabinet Secretaries of the Government have changed their mind. And if this bill goes through unamended today and tomorrow, eighteen months, it seems to me not a lot of time. Now, I know the SNP likes to talk about generations being a few weeks, but for most of us, eighteen months is a long period of time. And what this will do, in my opinion, and in the opinion of housing associations and of the experts, if you've been listening to them in the emails that you have received, it will force people to give up their properties, and we will see more people homeless across our country. And that's why I'm asking members to support the two amendments in my name.
Thank you. I call Mark Griffin to speak to Amendment Two and other amendments in the group.
Thank you. Convener, if I could start with Jeremy Balfour's Amendment Number One. I do agree with Jeremy Balfour's comments that the Government have changed their mind on this. We welcome that change of mind. We called for that in the summer, so are absolutely delighted to see the Government following where Labour have led, and so would oppose Mr. Balfour's Amendment Number One. The rest of the amendments in this group, all amendments apart from One and Thirty-Two in my name, are my attempt to be helpful to the Government, and in particular, to be helpful to the First Minister. The First Minister, in her Programme for Government in early September, in that statement said that rents would be frozen from that day. Now, this bill does not propose to freeze rents from that day. Rents can increase today, they can increase tomorrow, they can increase the day after that, and for weeks and weeks and weeks, up until the 5th of December, for those tenants who live in the private sector. So like I say, these amendments are an attempt to be helpful for the First Minister, to make sure that the statement the First Minister made in Parliament can remain accurate. And that is to change the dates in the bill to, from the 6th of September to the 6th of June. That means that any notice issued by a private landlord that has the three months to take effect will be ruled ineligible after the 6th of June. That means that the First Minister's statement that all rents were frozen on the day she made her Programme for Government statement can remain valid. And so, on that basis, I ask members to support Amendments Two, Three, Seven, Fourteen, Fifteen, Seventeen, Twenty-Two, and Twenty-Seven. Thank you, convener.
Thank you. Call Minister Patrick Harvey.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. And briefly, at the outset, can I once again thank colleagues from across political parties, stakeholders, and most particularly officials from both Government and Parliament for the incredible pace at which they've worked in bringing us to this point. Amendments One and Thirty-Two, as Jeremy Balfour says, are very clearly intended to take away one of the principal functions of this bill. He says that we had a powerful debate at stage one. Yes, indeed we did, and Parliament agreed to the general principles of the bill. And even if these amendments are admissible, it seems to me that at a political level, they do fundamentally undermine the purpose of the bill itself. The Conservatives, of course, have a right to disagree, but there is no ambiguity about these amendments. They are fundamentally opposed to the reasons why we are bringing this bill in the context of a cost of living crisis. We believe that an emergency response is necessary, and tenants are particularly exposed to that cost of living crisis. That justifies a rent freeze. I would just add finally that we did not, absolutely did not, as Mr. Balfour suggests, argue the case that he is arguing a few months ago. What we did then was to oppose an amendment which we were convinced would not be legally competent. This Presiding Officer is legally competent, will be effective at giving protection to tenants. In respect of the remaining amendments in this group, these would, as Mr. Griffin says, have the effect of retrospectively applying the rent control measures contained in Section One to the 6th of June, rather than the 6th of September. The purpose of backdating these measures to the 6th of September, as I think the First Minister herself has made clear, is to avoid that Programme for Government announcement resulting in landlords seeking to avoid the effect of the measures by acting before we have time to bring the law before Parliament. In effect, to avoid rent increase notices being issued in response to the announcement. Ensuring that this protection is given is accomplished by the bill. It's a necessary part of the package, delivering protections for tenants, and I think it gives a level of clarity to both landlords and tenants. I'm afraid I cannot accept the amendment to backdate this to June. We believe that would run contrary to the need for the law to be fair and certain. It would result in landlords effectively changing the effect of them having been unaware of the intention to change the law months before that Programme for Government announcement was made. And to do so would inevitably open up the legislation to challenge and cause a significant degree of uncertainty. I give way.
Mark Griffin.
I think the uncertainty was caused by the First Minister announcing her statement for Programme for Government that rents would be frozen from that day. That has created uncertainty for tenants who would rightly have an expectation that their rents would be frozen from the time the First Minister made that announcement, not well into December. If the Minister isn't going to accept these amendments, does he accept that the First Minister should change the record?
Minister.
Thank you. I do think the First Minister has been clear. I regret the fact that the Member is choosing to misinterpret in that way. It's very clear that the intention is to prevent rent increase notices as a response to the Programme for Government announcement. And that is achieved by the bill as it stands. So while I thank the members for their contribution to the debate on this group, I must ask Parliament to vote against all amendments in this group.
Thank you. And Jeremy Balfour, to wind up and press or withdraw Amendment One.
Nothing else further to add, convener. I'm happy to move.
Can I confirm that you are pressing Amendment One, Mr. Balfour?
Convener.
Thank you very much. The question is that Amendment One be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
The Parliament is not agreed, therefore... Well, the Committee of the Parliament is not agreed, therefore there will be a division. And as this is the first division of the stage, I will suspend for around five minutes to allow members to access the digital voting system. We will now proceed with the division on Amendment One. The question is that Amendment One be agreed to, and members should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. Point of order, Shona Robison.
I just checked that my vote was recorded.
I can confirm that your vote was recorded. Point of order, Stephanie Callahan.
Sir, I would have voted no.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. Point of order, Marie Guzon.
My page wouldn't load, and I would have voted no.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. The result of the vote on Amendment Number One in the name of Jeremy Balfour is yes twenty-seven, no eighty-nine. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Two in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment One. Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment Two be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
The Committee is not agreed, therefore we will move to a vote, and members should cast their votes now. The result of the vote on Amendment Number Two in the name of Mark Griffin is yes twenty, no ninety-five. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Three in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated, with Amendment One. Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. Move on to the group entitled Application of the Rent Cap. I call Amendment Four in the name of Miles Briggs, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. And can I point out that if Amendment Twenty-One is agreed to, I cannot call Amendments Twenty-Two and Twenty-Seven in the group entitled Operations of the Rent Cap, and Amendments Twenty-Three, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, and Twenty-six in this group due to preemption. So Miles Briggs to move Amendment Four and speak to all amendments in the group.
Thank you very much, convener. And can I start with Amendment Four in my name, which looks to remove the social rented sector from this bill and exempt it from regulations? We believe that the social housing sector should be exempt from the bill, and that the sector is already highly regulated and has taken important steps in keeping increased rents as low as possible. Furthermore, the Scottish Federation of Housing Associations have warned that unintended consequences of this bill with regards to social housing, the development of affordable housing, and also potential costs around construction costs, which we've seen increase, net zero targets not being met. And so, we would therefore ask members to support my amendment Four and also Willie Rennie's Amendment Five. Amendment Twenty-Three in my name looks towards properties in the mid-market rates. Mid-market rates is an affordable housing tenure offered by housing associations. The homes for rent to households on low to middle incomes. Rent for MMR homes are generally set lower than private rents, but higher than housing association rents for social housing. It's an important part of the housing mix to support those who may not be eligible or cannot access social rented homes, but struggle to afford higher rents in the private sector. The issue here is the tenancy type is a private residency, the same as homes rented by private landlords. We therefore hope that members will support Amendment Twenty-Three. My Amendment Twenty-Six is with regards to rent increase notices to be sent out to tenants before the expiry of this legislation. The bill states that any rent increase notice served while the rent cap is in force will have no effect, which effectively means that no rent rise notice can be served upon any tenant prior to the 1st of April 2023, assuming rent freeze expires on the day before. In effect, this would mean that rent freezes will remain in place until the end of April, not the end of March, as ministers have outlined, given the requirement to give 28 days' notice of any rent change in the social sector. We therefore believe that landlords should be able to provide this notice before the 1st of April.
Thank you. I call Willie Rennie to speak to Amendment Five and other amendments in the group.
Thank you, convener. I'll speak to Amendments Five, Twenty-One, and Twenty-Five. My amendments are focused on the social sector, but also the mid-market rental properties in the charity sector. In short, I want to remove them from the provisions of the bill. My rationale is that it won't help. The majority of tenants in the social sector won't benefit from the cap as their rent is paid by universal credit. There are targeted funds to help those struggling for those who are finding it difficult to pay their rent. And rents in the social sector are about half of those in the private sector. So the cap won't really help people with the cost of living, but the damage could be significant. It's the uncertainty that's most damaging. Although the rent cap may never have an effect on rents in the social sector, the uncertainty that it might has a massive impact on planning for the future. That means a cut to the house building and maintenance programmes. Even though they support the universal cap, there are several charities and organisations that have lobbied today have highlighted this particular issue. Now, the Minister recognises that there is a problem. To his credit, he's been working hard to reassure the sector. He has been committed to partnership working with them. He's indicated that the social and private sector may be decoupled post-March. I would suggest it would be much easier to decouple the sector now by removing them from the scope of the bill. Tenants would continue to be protected by the sector, the uncertainty would be removed, planning could restart, new houses previously in doubt could go ahead, existing homes could have new bathrooms, kitchens, windows, and roofs. Now, we heard yesterday very wise contributions from Bob Doris and John Mason. They relayed the concerns of the housing associations. Whilst I'm willing to... Yes, certainly.
Bob Doris.
Thank Mr. Rennie for giving way. Whilst, I'm not going to support his amendments today. I'm wondering if Mr. Rennie would agree that the statutory rent consultation process all housing associations have to conduct would be a really useful tool in deciding whether these powers were ever used from April next year onwards. And I would just state again, Presiding Officer, that of course, it's a cap, not a freeze in principle. So they could in theory be used sparingly, but my preference would be that they're not used at all. But do you agree that the rent consultation process could inform whether they are indeed ever used?
Willie Rennie.
I think that's right, and that's one of the benefits of the social sector, is that we've had those in place for many, many years, and that's resulted in very low rents, half of those in... and that's resulted in very low rents, half of those in the private sector. And my argument, we should use those processes now, not just post-March. But I do accept the point that Bob Doris has made. It may be a mechanism for going forward. I think they should be treated differently. Let's not fix what isn't broken. So my three amendments have three purposes. Amendment 21 removes social housing from the scope of the bill. Amendment 25 gives a longer notice period on rent cap changes to allow the sector to consult and prepare for any changes. I also support Miles Briggs' amendment four. Turning to amendment 23, it's about mid-market rents. I support removing those from the scope of the bill for those in the charity sector. There are many organisations like the Gansey Trust in Perth that provide excellent housing that are off high standard. In fact, I saw very new ones recently, which are off very high energy efficiency, and their rents are mid-market. I think those rents are effectively controlled just now. So we're trying to control what's already controlled. Their planning could be interrupted for the future, and I would suggest in the same way as trying to remove social housing from the scope of this bill, we should also remove mid-market rents in the charity sector from the scope of this bill. So I would urge members to support 4, 5, 21, 23 and 25.
Thank you. Pauline MacNeil to speak to amendment six and other amendments in the group.
Thank you, convener. My first set of amendments, amendments six, 16 and 24, address the question that landlords cannot raise rents between tenancies. These amendments seek to prevent a landlord from raising the rent of a property between tenancies up to the 31st of March 2023. This applies to private rented sector, short assured tenancies and Scottish secure tenancies. There are a couple of issues that I had in my fear rents bill in the last Parliament I would like to test in relation to this legislation, and this is one of them. I have a concern that unless this is done, we may see a surge in either illegal convictions or illegal increases of rent. Now, something the third sector organisations have raised in their briefings to MSPs this week. Sisters of the Vice Scotland, Joseph Rowntree Foundation, Poverty Alliance and Shelter Scotland are concerned about unintended consequences for tenants and landlords with low public awareness. They are concerned that it runs a risk of increased number of evictions and unlawful rent increases with unclear options of redress. I would ask ministers to consider the response to this, that in the frame of the legislation, it's clear how it would operate if landlords operate within the law, what we do in a small minority who may not operate within the law. And of course, between tenancies means that the tenant has already been evicted and the landlord can impose a new rent, which is not a rent freeze. And the joint briefing from these organisations expresses quite sincere and widespread concerns about illegal evictions. So I'd ask ministers to address that. My other amendments, number nine and number 10, relate to the statement that landlords will make in relation to their application to increase the rent in the framework of the bill. So these amendments seek to make sure that landlords cannot insist that the proposed increases are done until after the rent officer or the first tier tribunal has approved this. Further to this, the landlord should make it clear in their communication to the tenant that the new rent will not be payable until this has been approved. The reason I wanted to explore this is that... Richard Lennon made this point yesterday in the stage one debate, as did others. I don't believe we have the right balance between landlords and tenants in the legislative framework beyond this. And therefore, I think where possible, we must seek to balance what might be fearful tenants who think that because the landlord has applied, therefore it's automatically it will be approved. And I'd like landlords to explain to their tenants that they're applying for it. I want it to be included in the statement because of course the tribunal may not be satisfied yet the hardship test is there. Just lastly, I didn't want to really comment much on the other amendments from Willie Rennie and Miles Briggs. It was just one point to Willie Rennie I wanted to make... Sure, yeah.
Edward Mountain.
Thank you. And convener, I'd just like to make it clear that I recorded a register of interest yesterday that I have private rental housing. The problem is with first-tier arbitration when it comes down to it. I'm currently told the wait time is eight, nine months. And there is no... Well, there is provision within the financial memorandum with this bill saying that there's sufficient funds there. There obviously isn't. I wonder if the members would reflect on whether the first-tier tribunals, in order to comply with her wish, should have more money so they could sit more regularly and give satisfactory answers quickly to tenants?
Pauline MacNeil.
It's difficult to disagree with a member because in anything I've ever said in this Parliament, I have always had to strike the right balance between landlords and tenants. And I don't think it helps anyone to have an inefficient tribunal system. So yes, I don't have any difficulty agreeing with that. But what I'm trying to achieve with my amendments is that I don't want tenants thinking that because a landlord has applied, notwithstanding the point the member makes, that it can take some time. And that is not fair to the landlord. I totally accept that, but it isn't fair to the tenant either. And that's what I seek to do in these amendments. I just wanted to make one point to Willie Rennie about the question of universal credit. I think it's quite important to understand that in the housing support sector, those who are not on universal credit but are on low pay, who do not get support from the government, it's incredibly hard to access hardship funds. And I've argued this many, many times. So please, I ask members, not to discount those poor families, particularly in the private rented sector, which is where poverty mainly lies for families and children, to make sure that we're doing more to ensure that they have the support they need to support their tenancies and have spoken long enough to allow the member to intervene.
Yes. Willie Rennie.
I have no great disagreement about the poverty, particularly those in private rented tenancies. My simple point about support mechanisms is through housing associations with hardship grants that are available. Perhaps not as much as we would like, but they are available and will help those who are struggling to pay their rent on top of those who receive the universal credit. That's my central point, and I think that outweighs the disadvantages that will be received if we have an inclusion of the social rented sector in the scope of this bill.
Pauline MacNeil.
I think the member for the intervention makes this point very well, but I hope that the point I'm making is not overlooked, and it is this: If you operate support based on hardship funds, by and large, many people will not meet the test. It's not universal. And where we're in the middle of an acute, the most acute crisis in the cost of living, I simply think it's something to address further down the line, that those who don't have government support need to have better ways to support their tenancies. It's just a wider point I wanted to make. And thank you, Presiding Officer.
Thank you. And I call Alex Rowley to speak to amendment 31 and other amendments in the group.
Presiding Officer, thank you. I'm pleased to raise this amendment 31 in my name as I feel there is a missed opportunity within this bill to extend the proposed protections to a group that have been overlooked within the legislation. Care home residents are in effect tenants in the same manner that students are. Yet we see one group offer protection from the bill and one sidelined. Some care home charges fall under common law tenancies in a similar manner to student residential tenancies, for example, accommodation, utilities, food and insurance. As such, my amendment mirrors the wording of the existing provisions relating to student residential tenancies in the bill to apply to eligible care home charges. Great effort has been put into the bill to ensure that students are included despite more complex arrangements potentially being in place. Yet that same concern has not been shown to care home residents. The Parliament Bills Team, when looking at this, have advised that the independently funded, supported person contracts could be considered equivalent to student accommodation and therefore within the scope of this bill. I remember when Mercedes Vilalba brought her amendment to the freeze rents to the Covid bill, and the Deputy First Minister responded at that time by saying what was wrong with the amendments, where the weaknesses were. And I intervened and asked him the question: But what are you going to do about the excessive rent rises being highlighted by Mercedes Vilalba? And I bring this amendment here today to try and raise those same types of issues, the excessive costs that people who are having to pay their own fees are filing, being piled upon them. So today I am highlighting the plight of self-funders in care homes and their families who say to me they are being fleeced and no one seems to care. I'm hearing from care home residents who are currently facing month-on-month increases in charges that they are paying. While safeguards are in place for many tenancies to stop rent increases from taking place more than once a year, that same protection does not get afforded to care home residents who are self-funders. People are telling me that they are struggling to keep up with the continuous rises in fees and are seeing all their money disappear on these rises. Often, these are people who have worked hard, have saved up through their entire life, only to see that money now disappear on ever-increasing care home fees. And it's worth restating, these are not people with major wealth. These are people who have worked hard all their lives, saved a bit and bought their homes. They now need support and care and are told that they have to pay for it. And as costs go up but local authority fees remain stagnant, they are the only source of additional income for private care home operators. I say again, the residents and their families feel like they're being fleeced and they want the same protections as all other renters have. I look forward to hearing what the minister has to say on this matter. As I say, this cannot continue. These people cannot be ignored. And neither can the fact that the charges are continually being put up and it seems there's nothing they can do and nobody cares.
I call Edward Mountain.
Thank you, convener. And I rise to speak in support of Willie Rennie's motion and Miles Briggs's motion. I don't think anyone really can argue the fact that housing associations and charities have worked extremely hard to meet the needs of their tenants, and they've struggled over previous years with rent caps. One of the big issues with the cost of living crisis is the fact that houses are incorrectly insulated. And that's why we need to invest on the insulation of houses. A survey in Wicklow that I carried out suggested there were 850 properties there owned by the council, of which 530 were below EPCC, which would cost in excess of £21 million to get up to the correct level. So we need to encourage landlords to invest in their properties. And I, along with many other Highland MSPs this morning, will have received a disturbing email from a housing association who is going to have to review their future investment in properties as a result of this legislation. What they have done, rightly so, is agreed a rent freeze this year and we're looking to have a rent increase next year in line with inflation. That seemed to be sensible. They were helping the tenants this year in order to invest next year. Now, they're in a position where they've helped the tenants this year. They can't help them next year by investing in the fabric of their buildings because they won't be allowed to address the issue of rents. That's why I think we need to remove housing associations and charities out of the bill at this stage so they can address that issue and carry on with that investment. Because if we don't give them certainty into the future, let me tell you, the supply underestries such that any works that might be allowed if this rent freeze doesn't continue won't be able to programme because the materials won't be requisitioned early enough. So that's why I support both of those amendments. And I believe the Parliament should too, because it is not only helping tenants, but it is addressing the problems of achieving insulated properties, which is something that all across Scotland should be trying to achieve. Thank you, convener.
Thank you. I call the minister.
Thank you very much, Presiding Officer. Before I turn to the amendments specifically, can I just respond to those last points on energy efficiency? I think this government has given a very clear, not just indication, but clear commitment of investment on energy efficiency right across our built environment, but in particular in terms of social housing. Edward Mountain is quite right to draw attention to the critically important nature of that investment in reducing our emissions, but also in reducing tenants' energy costs. And I would just refer him to some of the comments that came from the Energy Efficiency Association just recently, who in giving advice to the UK government said that they should follow the Scottish government's lead on the support that we're giving on that area. So if it's very brief.
It is very brief, and I do understand that Scottish governments wish to invest in housing. But old housing costs a lot of money. It's my estimate, having been a surveyor and having properties that need installation, it costs £40,000 to £50,000 to even get it up one level of EPC. And that is nowhere near what the government is promising for each of these social houses.
Minister.
Well, I come now to the amendments themselves. And in response to that last point, I would remind the members moving amendments 4, 5, 21 and 23, that fundamentally, the commitment to a 0% rent cap for the first six months has reduced the rental income of no social landlord in Scotland. And no decision has been made about the future. We're working very constructively with the sector in order to inform those decisions. These four amendments, numbers 4, 5, 21 and 23, would have the effect of removing registered social landlords, their wholly owned subsidiaries and local authorities from the rent cap. Now, as we set out and as we discussed yesterday, we proposed applying that rent cap until the 31st of March in the first instance and having it separately variable between the private and social rented sectors in order to take account of the distinct nature of the sectors. That date was set with the social rented sector in mind because we're aware that rents set in this sector are generally not set until the 1st of April and will not increase before then. We did this specifically to ensure that these emergency measures do not immediately impact on the finances of the social rented sector without full consideration of the perspective of the sector. I give way to Mr. Rennie.
Willie Rennie.
I mean, of course, he's absolutely right about that. But does he not accept the broader point that there is huge uncertainty? And I know he's had good discussions with the sector, that there's a good partnership in place. They'll probably be given a better foresight about what's happened. But he can't give them a guarantee that the cap won't extend beyond March. And that uncertainty has a very long-term effect on planning of building new homes and maintenance and all the rest of the package. He does accept that point about uncertainty, doesn't he?
Minister.
I'm going to come on to some of the arguments around Mr. Rennie's amendments and some of the reasons why I don't think his approach would give certainty in the way that he suggests. We are firmly committed to working with the sector as well as supporting them to undertake meaningful consultations with tenants while that work continues. And to drive that progress forward, we've established a short-life task and finish working group, bringing together officials from government with leaders from across the sector to identify and consider the options available. And I have to say, Presiding Officer, every discussion that I've taken part in over recent weeks with the sector, and I think it's true that the discussions the Cabinet Secretary has had as well, gives me great confidence that we can find a way through this that meets the needs of tenants in the sector who have that same expectation of security for themselves that other tenants do, as well as meeting the needs of the sector and the wider social purposes of social housing. So I'm not able to support these four amendments, 4, 5, 21 and 23, and would ask the members responsible not to press them. I'll turn now to amendments six, 16 and 24. I think these are all in Pauline MacNeil's name and raise a very substantive issue. The aim of this bill is to protect tenants, helping them to stay in their homes during the cost crisis, stabilising their housing costs. And the average length of a tenancy in Scotland is around 18 months. So the emergency measures will provide protection to the large majority of tenants. The application of the rent freeze on this basis responds to the need to ensure that measures are proportionate. Pauline MacNeil mentions the risk of illegal evictions. The additional penalties that are provided for in other parts of this bill create a strong disincentive for landlords to pursue unlawful evictions. And she's quite right also to raise the issue about raising awareness within the sector for tenants as well as landlords. And there are other parts of the bill where we will debate that. debate that. But prospective tenants entering into a new tenancy will do so on the basis of an agreed rent, and they will immediately have protection from any rent increase, as the measures in the bill will apply to their tenancy while in effect. Was there a request for an intervention there?
Pauline MacNeil.
Thank you. Perhaps you have clarified at your last point, but I just want to make sure. So if a tenant's lease is due within the six months of the period of the bill, then the landlord could just not renew the lease? Are you saying that they would get the protection of this bill, that the rent would be frozen? Because if you're saying that, then I'm content. But if you're not saying that, then my point is valid, which is, between tenancies, there should be a rent freeze, is my point.
Minister.
Well, of course, the majority of tenants do have security of tenure. I think it's possible that there may be aspects of this that we need to continue to discuss with Pauline MacNeil over the course of the day, but as I said, the enforcement of a rent freeze or rent controls...
Point of order, Edward Mountain.
Point of order, Minister. I just want to clarify that under the latest legislation, that the minister would know, that he is saying that tenancies will end. That's not true, because if that's what you just said, that's wrong. I just would like to clarify, Minister.
Thank you. I don't believe that is a point of order, but it is a debating point, Minister.
Thank you. I don't believe it's a point of order, and I also don't believe it's what I said. But to return to the points raised by Pauline MacNeil, in tenancy, rent increases generally don't take place in the social rented sector either, and most rents have been set annually from the 1st of April. I think in winding up on these particular amendments, there are very important longer-term arguments here about the operation of the rented sector, and we'll continue to address those in our longer-term work on permanent changes to legislation. But I'm afraid, in the context of this emergency bill, I am not able to support the amendment to extend the bill to enter tenancy rent increases, and so I would ask the member not to move those amendments, and if they are moved, I will have to ask Parliament not to support them. Turning to amendments nine and 10, again, from Pauline MacNeil, I am once again going to ask Pauline MacNeil not to move these amendments, but I think we all do want to make sure that tenants are well-informed. I think that this amendment in particular is flawed in its references, and it will require to be mirrored in respect of the provisions relating to the 1988 legislations, tenancies under that legislation. However, in looking at those issues, we would be content to bring back an amendment with the correct references, addressing the points that Pauline MacNeil seeks to raise in nine and 10, bring those back at stage three tomorrow. Amendment 25, Willie Rennie says that he's seeking to achieve clarity. I don't believe that amendment 25 would do that. It would require a lengthy notice period to be provided by the Scottish ministers when laying regulations to modify the rent cap for social tenancies. Now, clearly, Scottish ministers will, as I said, work closely with social landlords and tenants in social tenancies to discuss any changes to the rent cap, but this amendment would remove the ability of ministers to react to changing circumstances in order to protect the interests of landlords, where the cap must be increased. Equally, any future decrease in the rent cap, if it has already been increased, could not be actioned quickly due to this amendment. There are existing procedural safeguards in the bill, as the rent cap can only be increased via regulations subject to the affirmative procedure. So in order to ensure that Scottish ministers can react quickly to changing circumstances, I can't support this amendment, and I would invite Willie Rennie not to press it. If it is pressed, I urge members to reject it. Turning to amendment 26, from Miles Briggs, this amendment also we can't agree with in its current form, but again, I think it raises an important issue. We agree it needs to be addressed, and therefore we will bring a stage-three amendment to allow rent notice increases to be issued for the social sector if the cap is lifted one month before 1st of April 2023, to allow social landlords to issue rent increase notices in time for these to take effect on the 1st of April. This is an important issue, and as I say, we intend to address it tomorrow at stage three. I hope Miles Briggs will accept that possession. Convenor, amendment 31, I'm afraid I also cannot accept. There is a very understandable desire, as we debate emergency legislation in relation to the cost of living, to widen that debate out beyond rented housing, but I'm afraid it's not something that we're able to do, and this amendment very clearly does widen it out beyond the issue of rented housing. There are some really key differences between people in rented housing and a care home, which mean it's not appropriate to address this issue within this bill relating to the protection of tenants. In a care home, the purpose of the accommodation is the provision of a service, and therefore their charges are an amalgamation of services and accommodation. It covers food, heating care, and support, and other workforce costs, amongst other elements. Care homes do not offer tenancies. Instead, residents have a residency agreement that sets out, amongst other things, services that will be provided, payment fees and charges, and notice and termination periods for the residency agreement. The government recognises that care home fees can be high for independently funded, supported people, and this is why the free personal nursing care rates have been increased by more than the inflationary measure for the last two years, and we continue to work... Yes, indeed.
Pam Duncan-Glansey.
I thank the Minister for taking an intervention on this point. Is the Minister not aware that some of the reasons that care home costs are so high are because they have ancillary costs attached, like the Minister has just described, including rent? And it's quite easy to subtract that from their usual bills.
Minister.
I'm afraid that in the context of this amendment, I don't think this amendment offers an easy way to disembarguate those costs. We will continue to work with the UK government to address the increasing energy costs that the sector are facing in order to mitigate any impact from that on increasing fees. Having said that, I'm afraid I must... If there's time for a final intervention.
Alex Rowley.
Can I ask, I mean, the real important point in bringing this amendment here is to raise the plight of those self-funders, because, you know, one person wrote to me, their costs went up from £2669 to £2786 to £3221, all within the period of six months. So is the government aware of the massive pressures that are being put on self-funders, and the fact that they are the only people that seem to be asked to be paying the price? Because the government and local authorities have not put up the costs for care home for people that are receiving state funding. It's simply these self-funders. Are you aware of that?
Minister.
The government is, of course, aware of the impact of people in care homes, of the issues that the member raises. I say again, I'm afraid that these do go significantly beyond the issue of rented housing, which this bill seeks to address, and I would suggest that the member engages in dialogue with the Minister for Social Care in order to address those issues further. I entirely respect the intention with which he's raised them, but they go beyond the purpose of this bill, I'm afraid, and I would urge the member not to move that amendment, and if he does, I'm afraid I must ask the chamber not to support it.
Thank you. I call on Miles Briggs to wind up and press or withdraw amendment four.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. It is my intention to press amendment four and ask members also to support Willie Rennie's amendment five. This is our one opportunity to try to remove the social rented sector from this bill, and members across the Parliament need to take that, because the damage it will do, including them and not seeing the future investment which is so vitally needed for all our communities, is unacceptable. So I hope we will see them removed, and members will consider that. I also will be moving amendment 23, but given what the Minister has said with regards to amendment 26, I'm happy not to move that one and take forward discussions, I hope, before stage three tomorrow.
Thank you. The question is that amendment four be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
The committee is not agreed. We'll move to a vote, and members should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. Point of order, Edward Mountain.
For some reason, I don't be able to connect to the voting app. I would have voted yes.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. Point of order, Mary McKellen. Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. The result of the vote on amendment number four in the name of Miles Briggs is yes 30, no 85. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment five in the name of Willie Rennie, already debated with amendment four. Willie Rennie, to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that amendment five be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
No, the committee is not agreed. We'll move to a vote, and members should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. Point of order, Bob Doris.
The digital platform, I would have voted no.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. Point of order, Fiona Hislop.
My vote couldn't be cast. I would have voted no.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. Point of order, Liam McCarthy.
My app wasn't connecting to the system either, and I would have voted yes.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. The result of the vote on amendment number five in the name of Willie Rennie is yes 31, no 85. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment six in the name of Pauline MacNeil, already debated with amendment four. Pauline MacNeil, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. I call amendment seven in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not move. And then not move, and can I apologise to you, Convenor, and the rest of the team, that I should have drawn members' attention to my register of interest as they're known as a rented property in North Bantry Council, and apologise for not doing so at the start of the debate.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And we now move to the next group, landlord protection. I call amendment eight in the name of Jeremy Balfour, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. Jeremy Balfour, to move amendment eight and speak to all amendments in the group.
Thank you, Convenor. I would like to speak to amendments eight, 11, 12, 13, 18, 19, and 20. These amendments would allow the landlord to apply to the rent officer for a rent increase that would cover 100% of any increased property cost. This will ensure that the tenant remains financially viable for the landlord, and increased costs associated to the property can be paid to ensure the ongoing quality of the property. It will also, I think, have the positive effect of not making the tenant having to leave the property. As it stands, the government have put in a figure of 50%, but in my view, with the situation we are over the next few months, this will still cause problems. This view was highlighted to me yesterday evening as I was going home on the bus. I was a bit surprised that one of my constituents had actually engaged and listened to the debate, and decided to discuss it with me on my way home. And their example was this. They had a property here in Edinburgh that they had bought for a relation with a mortgage. That relation has now died, and so a tenant has gone into that property and is living there. However, the individual is not particularly well-off, and it is the mortgage and the other costs that cover the rent, covers the person's mortgage. Without that rent, they can't pay the mortgage, and would then have to hand that back and sell the property. They are expecting, over the next couple of months, to see their mortgage go up. That will mean that under this bill, they will have to apply...
Minister.
I wonder, as a number of members are already commenting, if the member would at least reflect and acknowledge what it is that is the cause of the increases that the member is referring to, and where the political responsibility for those reckless choices lies.
Jeremy Balfour.
I do find this an interesting narrative coming from Scottish government. I was elected to this parliament to represent my constituents and to make decisions...
Mr. Youssef.
Does the Minister want to intervene or does he just want to say?
Hamza Youssef.
I'm happy to intervene to say it's your constituents, my constituents, who are facing mortgage rises because of your party's economic vandalism.
Through the chair, please, Mr. Youssef, Jeremy Balfour.
No doubt, the interest rates increases across Western Europe are all to do with Westminster as well.
Reality deniers.
Let's listen to Mr. Balfour.
Thank you, Convenor. Convenor, can I come back to my constituents? Because after all, we are here to represent them, not make cheap political points. So my constituent had informed me, obviously the committee don't want to hear this, but my constituent informed me that any rise in mortgage, for whatever reason, will mean that they will have to go and use the section within the bill to show financial hardship, and will have to then evict the tenant to sell the property. I suspect, and having had several other emails as this debate has been going on this afternoon, from again constituents within Loughran, that they will not be the only one that does this. If the government wants to carry on this policy, which, as we've heard from other parties... If the government wants to carry on this policy, which as we've heard from other parties may well be challenged in court, and let's be honest, the Scottish government getting bills legally right is not good, but if we are going to pursue this policy, let's at least protect the landlord from not having to sell property because of a financial situation that they have not created. We're not asking for profit, we're not asking that anyone goes and benefits financially from this, we are simply covering the cost. And the Scottish government cannot see that as a fair and reasonable thing to do.
Mark Griffin.
Jeremy Balfour makes the point that landlords shouldn't face hardship because of costs out with their control and they should be allowed to then sell that property to recover those costs. Why should a tenant be made homeless by a landlord selling a property because of costs and things happening out with their control?
Jeremy Balfour.
We're trying, I don't think we, member of respect, quite understand what we're trying, we're trying to stop that, we're trying to stop the tenant having to leave the property because the landlord simply can't afford to pay his or her mortgage. And that is a situation that will happen, because if that doesn't happen, the bank or building society will come and take the property off them, my constituents on the bus will then have a negative credit bearing and the tenant will still be evicted. It's a lose-lose situation. I believe that this is a reasonable amendment which will protect tenants and landlords for the next six to eighteen months and will allow people to plan with certainty that they will not lose their property. And for that reason, convenor, I ask this committee to support this amendment.
Thank you, Mr Balfour. I now call Mark Griffin to speak to amendment fourteen and other amendments in the group.
Amendment, groups three, four, five and six create, have a number of amendments that work across the groups which are linked together. Amendments in this group and the following groups ensures that exceptions related to substantial arrears and financial hardship on part of landlords can only apply where a high test of financial hardship applies as a result of those substantial arrears. We are seeing that landlords shouldn't just...
Okay, we have a brief suspension while I check the papers here. Okay, apologies to the committee and in particular to Mark Griffin, who tried to style it out, I thought commendably, my mistake. I now call Murdo Fraser to speak to amendment twenty-eight and other amendments in the group. Mr Fraser.
Well, thank you convenor, I think that's a perfect illustration of what happens when you try and rush legislation through parliament without proper scrutiny and consultation. Can I, before I come to amendments in the group, I should remind members, as it's my first contribution of my register of interest, I'm a member of the Law Society of Scotland and I have an interest in two properties which are let on a long-term basis. I have three amendments in this group, my amendments twenty-eight and twenty-nine cover essentially the same point. The bill as it is presented provides that in the private rented sector landlords are able to increase rents to cover up to 50% of increased costs, for example, finance costs or insurance premiums increasing. But that provision only applies to the private rented sector, it does not apply, as the bill stands, to the social rented sector. And what my amendments twenty-eight and twenty-nine seek to do is extend this particular measure to also cover the social rented sector. Now, we heard in the stage one debate yesterday, convenor, a number of members from all different political parties speaking about the importance of the social rented sector, and I think that is a view widely shared across the chamber, and therefore I hope there will be some sympathy for social landlords who will face similar pressures to private landlords in terms of increasing costs, whether that's in terms of finance or insurance premiums and elsewhere. And therefore these two amendments from me seek to give social landlords that additional protection that already applies in the private rented sector. Amendment twenty-nine is my preferred amendment, it provides that social landlords would have 100% protection from increased costs, but an alternative which members might find more amenable is my amendment twenty-eight, which restricts that protection to 50% in line with what is provided for private landlords. And I would simply observe that the Scottish Federation of Housing Associations, in their briefing for the debate this afternoon, have expressed support for my amendment twenty-eight and I'd encourage members to listen to what they have to say on this particular point. My third amendment, amendment thirty, deals with a slightly different point. The rent freeze encapsulated in this bill relates to any sums which are paid by the tenant to the landlord, and in some tenancies, the cost of utilities such as gas or electricity will be charged separately and would therefore be caught by the rent freeze. As drafted inchedra one of the bill, the rent freeze would also apply to utility charges arising from the tenant's use, except where these are deemed to be excessive. So where the landlord sees a large increase in utility costs, as it stands, they are not permitted to pass that on to the tenant unless the tenant's use of these utilities is excessive. Now, my difficulty with this, convenor, is we do not know what is meant in this bill by the word excessive, perhaps the minister in responding can tell us what is an excessive use of utilities, there's nothing in the policy memorandum that indicates what that might be the cost. Would it be 10% above the norm, 50% above the norm, 100% above the norm, what is the definition of excessive? And it does seem unreasonable that the landlord is not able to pass on any increase in utility costs, except where it's excessive, when we don't know what excessive means. So my proposal is we remove the word excessive, which is not defined, and that ensures that the tenant who is using utilities pays for the utilities and the tenant's use of the utilities is not billed to the landlord, which it seems to me is what happens in terms of the bill as drafted. Thank you convenor.
Thank you, Mr Fraser, I now call Jamie Green to speak to amendment seventy-two and other amendments in the group, Mr Green.
Thank you, I'll only speak to my own amendment, convenor, I feel like the odd one out because I've got no interest declaring rental properties. Thank you, I'm glad I'm not alone, it seems to be the SMB benches have more of them than I do, but there you are. Not pointing at anyone, star draw up on the right. No, no, on a serious note, I do want to say that I do have an interest in the proceedings today, and that interest actually is that my mother lives in a housing association home and I have actually quite grave concerns about the state of it. The necessary upgrades that she and many of her neighbours and many in my community will need, particularly around issues around insulation, vital upgrades to their heating and windows and doors, all necessary upgrades which will help insulate the homes, make their heating costs lower and help our whole country meet our net zero targets, I think all of that is clearly at risk given how we've just voted on amendment four in the name of my colleague, Miles Briggs, who I commend for bringing that forward. Housing associations are on the record, we've all had correspondence from them, and I hope we've all read them, are on the record as being explicitly clear about the risk to those vital upgrades and investments in current stock property, not new property, in current stock, much of it is old, ageing and dilapidated, and I know that because I've seen the insides of many of them, as I'm sure we all have. I want to talk to my amendment seventy-two here because it's based on the following quite simple assumptions. The first is that what the government is doing today is seeking to use the law to cap the amount of rental income that a private landlord can charge, fine. Two, many landlords, not all, will have used buy-to-let mortgages to fund the purchase of those properties, that is a fact, two. Three, there is often a very direct financial correlation between the amount of rent received from that rental property and the amount of the mortgage income, in fact for many it's a simple pass-through between the rental income and the outgoing of the mortgage payment, there's not often or always even profit involved for many small landlords. And four, and this is the point of my amendment, that if the rental income as a result of a cap that the government has induced is less than the amount of the mortgage that's payable on that property, then I believe that will cause financial issues for the property owner, potentially putting them at risk of defaulting on the debt and at worst case put the property itself at risk. Why? Because mortgages are contracts, big financial contracts between a borrower and a lender, and the borrower runs the very same risk as anyone else of falling foul of such a contract for non-payment or if they cannot afford to make the payments. My view today... Yes, happily, yeah.
Michelle Thompson. Miss Thompson, it's your card in.
Sorry, thank you. In that exact circumstance you outlined, the real issue actually is section twenty-four of the 2015 Finance Bill in Westminster, that means that those costs can't be offset as a legitimate business expense, so perhaps you should clarify for everyone here, in other words Westminster legislation has greatly contributed to that situation.
Can I remind members to talk through the chair, Jamie Green?
The member, I'm not sure if she declared her interest at the beginning of that intervention, but is really scraping the barrel here, what we're talking about is her front bench introducing legislation which is capping the amount of revenue that can be charged for a rental property. At the same time, that same landlord who may only have one property also has a mortgage to pay on that property, it's a direct correlation, that's the correlation I'm pointing to today, and that's the point of which my amendment is all about, and if the member wants to listen carefully, I will share my philosophical view about this, because if the government, if the government, her government introduces a policy which caps rental revenue, then it should pay for it, not the wider public and certainly not those people who will be affected by the policy, happy to give way again.
Cabinet Secretary.
So I just want to make sure that we're understanding this amendment and the purpose of it clearly. So as we know, and it's been referred to by other members, the UK Tory government has literally trashed the economy, and one of the, one of the results of that, as Jamie Green knows, is a massive rise in interest rates, putting people's home at risk and indeed putting up the mortgage costs of landlords, which is the point of his amendment, the cost to landlords, correct? That is the point of his amendment. So the Tories, the Scottish Tories are now coming to this chamber with an amendment that wants to put Scotland's public finances in place to pay for that Tory incompetence by having to pay for any rise in interest rates for landlords' mortgages, that's what the amendment says, it wants a scheme to be set up using public money to pay for any increase in the interest rates for landlords' mortgages in order to cover that, which of course is directly related to the economic folly of the Tory government. I think that is quite an incredible amendment for the Scottish Tories to come to this chamber with, and it would be good if Jamie Green could clarify if that's exactly what his amendment is trying to do.
Thanks Cabinet Secretary, there is an opportunity for any member who wishes to press their button to speak in this debate, so interventions should be interventions rather than speeches, Jamie Green.
Thank you convenor, the members welcome to participate in the debate in one second, colleagues, the members welcome to participate in the debate and not give lengthy grievance rattled speeches about Westminster, Tory governments, Tory this, Tory that, no, we've heard quite enough, minister, we've heard quite enough. The point I'm making, and I'm happy to answer your question directly and then I'll take another intervention, is that this is this government's policy to introduce a cap on the amount of revenue that can be gained from rent, it is this government's policy, whatever the rights and wrongs of it, and we can have a debate about that, but if that means that that puts the property at risk, which it very, very well may do, and I'm going to come on to the evidence based behind that in a second if the minister wants to listen, then that is a problem, I'm simply saying that why should the public pay the price for that policy and not the government, because it is the government's policy to induce that cap and not the public's. I'm happy to give way to Mr Briggs.
Miles Briggs.
In this amendment, because I listened to the flawed logic of the Cabinet Secretary there, what she is basically saying also applies to the social rental sector, so in other words, it is this SNP-Green government which are trashing the social rental sector in Scotland.
Jamie Green.
And the sad, the sad truth, Mr Briggs, is that you're right, because if we're in a scenario, if we're in a scenario where as a result of the cap, our social housing, social housing providers cannot put the vital investment they need into degradating housing stock, then on their heads be it. We do know, upstairs, officer, that we could be in a situation where landlords simply cannot afford to pay their mortgages or other costs, now there is some provision in the bill around that, I accept that, but I simply don't think it goes far enough, we don't want to see them getting into difficulties, and what we certainly don't want as a by-product of legislation is for the property market stock to reduce, because therein lies some real issues, and that's a point that I think will be made over the course of the debate today. I also just want to close by, just one second, I want to close by, just in the interest of time, we will be here all night, is that I did get an email from a landlady in my, my region who wanted me to pass on the following to the government, she said, "I am a landlady with only one rental property, which is my only source of income, not being able to put up the rent or indeed evict non-payers could put me into a difficult situation or near bankruptcy, I'm already near that stage", she says. She wants me to make this point to the government, not all landlords are big portfolio owners, not all landlords are big portfolio landlords with lots of money, she says, "A lot of landlords are just everyday people with a little money, and this blanket policy does not fairly consider the thousands of landlords across Scotland who also are struggling", and she's absolutely right, why are we not listening to them? Yes, happily.
Cabinet Secretary.
Jamie Green makes an important point, and it was absolutely for that reason about the landlady that Jamie Green refers to, that the safeguards are in this bill for that very scenario, and I hope that he will reassure her that those safeguards are there for exactly that type of scenario, because that is important, that we all reassure our constituents where we get the opportunity.
Jamie Green.
I'm glad the minister mentions the safeguards, as far as I can see from section thirty-three A, that they are capped at 50% of rising costs and the rent can only go up by a maximum of 3%, if I'm wrong on that, I'm happy to stand corrected, but that's actually, for many, may not simply be enough, which is, which is why my amendment still stands. All I would say in closing is that this is a choice of the government's own path of choosing, as I said, whatever the rights and wrongs of it, and people have different views on it, I'm simply saying they should pay for it, or at least be honest with people and say to landlords, "If you disagree with my amendment, be upfront and clear with them and say to them, 'We're asking you, in fact, we're expecting you to pay for our policy', be honest and be upfront about that, that's all I have to say on the matter, thanks.
Thank you, Mr Green, I now call Mark Griffin.
Thank you, President Officer, I wasn't planning to speak in this grouping until you called me by surprise, but since the debate has continued in this way, I feel like I have to, and I have to come to speak to amendment seventy-two in the name of Jamie Green. I absolutely cannot believe that a Conservative MSP would table an amendment which would give public subsidy to a private landlord struggling with their mortgage, which is a direct fault of his government's action in pushing up interest rates. I cannot believe, I cannot believe that, not at the moment, I cannot believe that the Conservative Party's... Conservative Party's priority is to protect landlords from rising interest rates but have no plans whatsoever, have put forward no proposals to support the many thousands of households, hundreds of thousands of households, who are paying the price for his government's ineptitude in interest rates and mortgage rates skyrocketing. Thank you, Presiding Officer.
I now call the minister.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. Clearly, this group has opened up the opportunity for some of the fundamental differences in approach that were debated yesterday, again, to be heard and it's obviously welcome to have that, that robust exchange of views. We have very divergent opinions, well, I suspect it's very divergent opinions between the Conservatives and the rest of us in this chamber on the fundamentals, even if other colleagues may disagree on some of the details, I think we're mostly on the same page on the fundamentals. And in addressing first of all the amendments from Mr. Balfour, I want to look back to some of the last comments from, from Mr. Green about balance. Fundamentally, in crafting this bill, we have had to ensure that there is a balance of interests between landlords and tenants. That is the purpose of the package of safeguards that we built into this bill, precisely to recognise what Mr. Green says, that not all landlords are hugely wealthy, hugely profitable businesses with very extensive property portfolios. Some are, but some are the kind of person that Mr. Green describes and the package of safeguards in this bill is precisely designed to address that. And indeed, the Scottish Association of Landlords have recognised that. John Blackwood on the radio this morning said, "We all support the idea that tenants do need protection" and he went on to say, "Certainly, we do welcome the mitigations in the bill." And on several occasions, Mr. Blackwood has, outside of that interview, has recognised the work that the government has done to produce a balanced package. And indeed, if we hadn't produced a balanced package, we would not have been able to satisfy ourselves or satisfy the Presiding Officer that this bill is within competence. It has to achieve that balance in order to be within competence and it does. A giveaway.
Jamie Green.
Can I first of all thank the minister for acknowledging that I bring forward the amendment in good faith as a result of the feedback that I'm getting, but does he also recognise that the same John Blackwood also was explicitly clear that with these challenges, some landlords will soon find themselves in financial difficulty and ultimately having to make that decision to take action by either selling the property or exiting the sector? And that's surely something, something that none of us in the chamber want. We don't want to see that reduction in the, in the private stock because it is needed whether we like it or not.
Minister.
None of us want to see anybody in this country facing financial hardship and I only wish both governments were acting with, with due regard to that risk. I'll come on to, I'll come on to Mr. Green's amendment itself, but I wanted to address those wider points about balance first of all because they do relate also to Mr. Balfour's amendments. So I'm speaking first of all to Amendments Eight, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Eighteen, Nineteen and Twenty. Mr. Balfour clearly once again sets out quite fairly and is within his right to do so that he is fundamentally against the, the measures in this bill, doesn't support the measures that we're taking to protect tenants. But I would urge him as well as others to recognise the, the comments that Scottish Association of Landlords have made about the balanced package of safeguards that exist. He's concerned about people facing costs out of their control, but he seems only to be concerned about landlords facing costs out of their control and I think Mr. Griffin was quite right to pick him up, that we should be concerned about landlords and tenants. And it is that balance, it is that balance that this, I will in just a moment, it is that balance that this fifty per cent figure seeks to recognise, to ensure that if there are these increases in prescribed limited costs, they will be balanced between landlord and tenant. A giveaway.
Jeremy Balfour.
Would the, does the minister concede and accept that if the landlord cannot pay his mortgage, the tenant is very likely to face eviction? So this is not just about supporting the landlord, that the consequence of the landlord not being able to pay a mortgage will be the tenant will be evicted?
Minister.
And without once again getting into the, the politics of the, the reasons behind that rise in, in interest rates, it's worth reflecting on the fact that the majority of private rented tenancies in Scotland do not have a mortgage sat behind them and in fact, many of those that do will be on a fixed rate, which will not be due to change in the immediate period ahead. And so the, the approach that we've taken is, as I say, balanced and recognises that where there are increased costs, there needs to be some degree of flexibility, but it needs to work in a way that is, that is balanced. I turn to Amendments Twenty Eight, Twenty Nine and Thirty. I think in many ways these will, well, Twenty Eight and Twenty Nine in the first instance, these will cut across, I think, the work that we and the social rented sector are committed to doing collectively, collaboratively through that short life working group that I mentioned earlier. And as I said, I get a sense that there is a real willingness to work in that collaborative spirit to ensure that there's a way forward that protects tenants as well as the providers of social housing. The, the amendments proposed at Twenty Eight and Twenty Nine would not be the, the way that we think that the, the protection for the social rented sector would, would work. In fact, I think it might undermine and preempt the work that we intend to do and we intend to take that forward with momentum. Amendment Thirty, in relation to student tenancies, it's important to recognise that they're structured differently. We have the desire to offer parity of protection, but student tenancies often include energy costs. We've defined rent for this sector to make it clear that rent includes the sums payable in respective services, repairs, maintenance or insurance, but where utilities are included in the rent and a student makes excessive use of them, then it's right and fair that an accommodation provider can seek recovery, just a moment, I'll, I'll make some progress, can seek recovery of this from the tenant where that tenancy allows that. Mr. Fraser's amendment would create a loophole. It would allow providers to circumvent the rent freeze by increasing the utility of the rent, even if it's being used normally rather than excessively. And in terms of the questions around definition that Mr. Fraser raised, this is part of the contract. It wouldn't be appropriate to apply a global definition of, of those issues within the legislation because it's provided for within individual contracts governing purpose-built student accommodation. And I'll finally, yes, I will.
Murda Fraser.
Grateful to the minister for the explanation he has just given, but he's just said this will be a matter for the contract. So is he saying it's a matter therefore for the accommodation provider, the landlord, the university, that it might be a private company that's developed student flats, for example, to specify what would be excessive use? So if they said it's five per cent above the trend, that would be accepted?
Minister.
The existing contracts stand and generally speaking, the, the existing contracts allow the providers to charge extra fees for excessive use and the, the provisions would be interpreted in that context. I'll turn finally to Amendment Seventy Two. Amendment Seventy Two, the Cabinet Secretary was, was quite right to challenge the, the fundamentals, the idea that the public purse should pay for people's mortgage costs. But I, I think perhaps even the Cabinet Secretary was a little bit kind in this instance, referring to interest, because the amendment from Jamie Green, I'm going to quote for it, "Scottish ministers must make a scheme or schemes for the making of payments to landlords who are able to demonstrate that their monthly mortgage payments exceed the rental income." Monthly mortgage payments, so not just the interest, but the repayment mortgage payments would be covered by this amendment. What Mr. Green is arguing is that while he says that these costs should not fall on the wider public, that's precisely who these costs would fall on. The Scottish government holds the public purse. The Scottish government holds money on behalf of the wider public and he's asking for that to be dipped into to repay the personal debt of landlords, not to service their interest payments, but to service all of their monthly mortgage payments. The idea, the idea that we use public funds in that way is astonishing. It's astonishing from somebody on the right of the political spectrum, it's certainly astonishing to the rest of us and I give way.
Jamie Green.
I think Mr. Harvey fails to acknowledge or accept that it is, this is his policy, this is his government's policy to cap rents, to cap the amount that can be charged. Now, I'm simply making the point that that may be fine when those two numbers match, but when the payments by the landlord are higher than the cap that his government have introduced, then it is his government's policy which is undermining the borrower's ability to keep up those payments. It's his government's policy that I'm asking him to pay for, not the wider public.
Minister.
I, I might take this argument seriously if it had come from the, the kind of tenants' rights campaigner who would say it was unacceptable at a time when mortgage payments were less than rental income, that that should be repaid to the tenant or repaid to the public purse. But I don't think that's Mr. Green's position in relation to how private renting ought to work. And the idea, the idea that we have public payment for people's repayment of people's mortgages in these circumstances is astonishing. We've seen unfunded tax cuts coming from the Conservative Party recently, but the idea of unfunded repayment of landlords' mortgages, I think, is astonishing. And who would end up repaying? It would be those who benefit from the services that this government would have to cut in order to fund this uncosted bill. Who should be paying for that? Should we pay for that by scrapping the Scottish Child Payment? Should we pay for it by scrapping free prescription charges? No. This government has brought forward a balanced bill which reflects both the interests of tenants who need protection from rising rents in these difficult times and landlords, not all of whom are in the same circumstances. This bill is balanced already, this amendment would unbalance it fatally and I urge members to reject all the amendments in this group.
I call Jeremy Balfour. To wind up, people have saw Amendment Eight.
Thank you, convener. I will be brief. I think in the last twenty to thirty minutes, we've seen this bill simply collapse. And we've seen it collapse by the minister's interventions and his speech. Did you notice, convener, how often he mentions the word, "This is legally competent"? Well, let's wait and see a few months in regard to that. And I have to say, I have a lot of respect for Mark Griffin and I genuinely think he's hopefully dismissing the point on this and that is, the issue is here, the issue is here, that we are trying to protect the tenant from being evicted from their property and without the hundred per cent guarantee for that, as my colleague Murda Fraser and Jamie Green have said, we will end up with more people being evicted from property. Why not? Yes.
Bob Doris.
Undoubtedly, the member thinks that reinstating universal credit cuts and upraising benefits by inflation would do more to protect tenants from eviction than your lousy amendments.
Through the chair, please. Through the chair, please. Jeremy Balfour.
Again, I think Mr. Doris would better with my intervention and I think Mr. Doris maybe wants to go and stand for the Westminster Parliament if he's so keen. We have a Scottish Parliament and we're dealing with this bill here today and maybe he should concentrate on this bill rather than, and if he wants to go to Westminster, go and do that. What we, what we have seen in regard to the responses to this amendment is political dogma over pragmatism. And what we have seen, what we have seen today from a minister and the Cabinet Secretary is frankly a, a party that is happy to go with dogma, even if it means more people are homeless. And that, I'm afraid, is where this government has got to today and I move Amendment Eight in my name, convener.
The question is Amendment Eight be agreed? Are we all agreed? We will, we are not agreed, we will move to a vote. The result on the vote on Amendment Number Eight in the name of Jeremy Balfour is yes, twenty-seven, no, eighty-seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Nine in the name of Polly McNeil, already debated with Amendment Four. Polly McNeil to move or not move?
Not moved.
That amendment is not moved. The question is that Amendment Ten in the name of Polly McNeil, already debated with Amendment Four, Polly McNeil to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. The question is that Amendment Eleven in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment Four, Jeremy Balfour to move or not?
Not moved.
That amendment is not moved. I call Amendment Twelve in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment Eight. Jeremy Balfour to move or not move?
Convener, not moved and if it would be helpful, Amendment Thirteen, Eighteen, Nineteen and Twenty, I will not be moving.
That may be helpful, unfortunately, they're not in a row and therefore I'm not able to take up your kind offer. Amendment, that's not moved, yeah. Question is Amendment Thirteen be agreed? No, no. So what you've done now, Jeremy Balfour? Amendment is, the question is Amendment Thirteen in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already moved with, debated with Amendment Eight, Jeremy Balfour to move or not? Not move. The, Amendment, I call Amendment Fourteen in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment One, Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Fifteen in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment One, Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Sixteen in the name of Polly McNeil, already debated with Amendment Four, Polly McNeil to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Seventeen in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment One, and Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Eighteen in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment Eight, Jeremy Balfour to move or not? That is not moved. I call Amendment Nineteen in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment Eight.
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Twenty in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment Eight. Jeremy Balfour to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Twenty One in the name of Willie Rennie, already debated with Amendment Four, Willie Rennie to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. Question is that, ah, I need to point out, yes. To point out the Amendment Twenty One, if it's agreed to, I cannot call Amendments Twenty Two, Twenty Three, Twenty Four, Twenty Five, Twenty Six and Twenty Seven due to a preemption. The question is that Amendment Twenty One be agreed to? Are we all agreed? We are not agreed, there will be a vote and members should cast their votes now. There will be a vote, and members should cast their votes now. That's the vote closed. Okay, the result of the vote on Amendment Number Twenty-One in the name of Willie Rennie is yes 31, no 84. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Twenty-Two in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment One, Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Twenty-Three in the name of Miles Briggs, already debated with Amendment Four, Miles Briggs, to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Twenty-Three be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. There will be a vote, and members should cast their votes now. And the vote's closed. Okay, the result of the vote on Amendment Number Twenty-Three in the name of Miles Briggs is yes 48, no 66. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Twenty-Four in the name of Polly McNeil, already debated with Amendment Four, Polly McNeil, to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Twenty-Five in the name of Willie Rennie, already debated with Amendment Four, Willie Rennie, to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Twenty-Five be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. There will be a vote, and members should cast their votes now. And the vote is closed. Point of order, Jamie Harker-Johnson.
Thanks very much. My unfortunate voting app wouldn't connect. I would have voted yes.
Thank you, Mr Harker-Johnson. I'll make sure that is taken into account. Point of order, Maggie Chapman.
I don't think my vote registered. I would have voted no.
Thank you, Miss Chapman. I'll make sure that that is taken account of. Okay, the result of the vote on Amendment Number Twenty-Five in the name of Willie Rennie is yes 51, no 65. There were no abstentions. That amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Twenty-Six in the name of Miles Briggs, already debated with Amendment Four, Miles Briggs, to move or not move?
Enlightening the minister's commitment for Stage Three, not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Twenty-Seven in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment One, Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. I call Amendment Twenty-Eight in the name of Murdo Fraser, already debated with Amendment Eight, Murdo Fraser, to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Twenty-Eight is agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. There will be a vote, and members should cast their votes now. And that vote is closed. Result of the vote on Amendment Number Twenty-Eight in the name of Murdo Fraser is yes 49, no 66. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed to. I call Amendment Twenty-Nine in the name of Murdo Fraser, already debated with Amendment Eight, Murdo Fraser, to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Twenty-Nine be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. There will be a vote, and members should cast their votes now. That's the vote closed. The result of the vote on Amendment Number Twenty-Nine in the name of Murdo Fraser is yes 31, no 85. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Thirty in the name of Murdo Fraser, already debated with Amendment Eight, Murdo Fraser, to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Thirty be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. There will be a division, and members should cast their votes now. That's the vote closed. The result of the vote on Amendment Thirty in the name of Murdo Fraser is yes 29, no 81. There were no abstentions. That amendment is not agreed. I call Amendment Thirty-One in the name of Alec Rowley, already debated with Amendment Four, Alec Rowley, to move or not move?
Moved, convener.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Thirty-One be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. There will be a division, and members should cast their votes now. That's the vote closed. The result of the vote on Amendment Number Thirty-One in the name of Alec Rowley is yes 19, no 96. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment Thirty-Two in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment One, Jeremy Balfour, to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. The question is that Schedule One be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are all agreed. The question is that Section Two be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are all agreed. There will be a brief pause before we move on to the next grouping.
Okay, thank you. We move on now, and I call the Group Operation of Evictions moratorium. I call Amendment Thirty-Three in the name of Murdo Fraser, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. Murdo Fraser, to move Amendment Thirty-Three and speak to all amendments in this group.
Thank you, convener. I'll just speak to Amendment Thirty-Three. I'll let others speak to their own amendments. Schedule Two, Paragraph One, deals with the issue of protection from evictions, seeking to protect those who have eviction notices served on or after the 6th of September 2022. I understand why the government's brought this particular measure in. I also understand why it's been backdated to the 6th of September, which was the day that the First Minister intimated that the eviction ban would come in, and that's been introduced as an anti-avoidance measure. And Subparagraph Two of Paragraph One of Schedule Two makes specific mention of eviction notices served on or after the 6th of September 2022 not being valid in effect because they are caught by the eviction ban. Now, it is inferred in the bill, that therefore eviction notices served before the 6th of September 2022 will not be caught by this. However, I think it would be helpful if that was put upon the face of the bill. And what my Amendment Thirty-Three seeks to do is just make it explicit that any eviction notice served before the 6th of September will not be caught by the eviction ban. And that protects those who had to take action to remove tenants for various purposes, perhaps for a long period of non-payment of rent, perhaps for antisocial behaviour, perhaps for other purposes, had to take action to remove a tenant before that date. I think it's very clear from the policy memorandum that accompanies the bill, Paragraph Forty-Two, that there is no intention that this bill should catch eviction notices prior to the 6th of September, and therefore I would hope this particular amendment would have the government's support. And I move that amendment. Thank you for siding off. Sorry, convener.
Thank you, Mr Fraser. I call Stephen Kerr to speak to Amendment Thirty-Four and other amendments in the group. Mr Kerr.
I, convener, I am afraid that once again we're making bad law by the way that we're rushing this through all of the stages of legislation today. And I'm astonished that so few members in this place seem to read the business pages of any decent newspapers so they could understand that interest rates are not simply rising here but across the entire advanced global economy. This amendment, which is Number Thirty-Four, and I'll also speak to Number Forty-Four, is on the basis that I believe that universities should be able to evict students who have breached tenancy agreements. Tenancy agreements will often contain terms and additions to ensure students aren't disruptive to others and aren't committing antisocial behaviour. University Scotland has specifically made it clear that universities have to retain the power to remove students from accommodation where they pose a risk, violent or sexual, to other students. They highlighted this in their briefing as a particular problem in university halls.
A member takes a question.
Yes, I will.
I wonder if the member might recognise that the briefing came before the bill was fully published.
Stephen Kerr?
I do recognise that, but nevertheless, the briefing is still pretty largely relevant, and particularly in relation to this amendment, because the bill states that students can be evicted for a relevant conviction, which means an offence committed by using or allowing the use of the let property for an immoral or legal purpose or any offence which was punishable by prison. The bill defines antisocial behaviour as doing something which causes or is likely to cause the other person alarm, distress, nuisance or annoyance. But this may not cover all students who pose a risk to others. And so the reason that I'm bringing this amendment is that I believe, as does University Scotland, that it is necessary to give universities the power to evict students who pose a risk to others. This is a very reasonable and reasoned amendment. So my amendment will simply allow institutions the ability to make judgements on evicting people from purpose-built student accommodation. And for me, this amendment is primarily about trust, and it's about protection. It's about protection of young people, some of whom can be very vulnerable as they take their first tentative steps away from home. Maybe some of us in this chamber can still remember our own sense of vulnerability when we first went to university. remember our own sense of vulnerability when we first went to university, probably the first time that we had stayed away from home on an extended basis. And the other thing is, and I would be astonished if someone disagrees with this, Scotland's universities take their duty of care for their students very seriously. And the uniqueness of purpose-built student accommodation should be recognised by the minister in the context of the amendment that I'm proposing. If members think that universities don't move heaven and earth to protect their students, I would suggest that members spend some time with Scottish universities. There are members here who have had their entire political ambition shaped by their experience at university. And this is an occasion, I hope I can say this with a recognisable authenticity, for us to put down our megaphones and to rationally consider what this amendment does in terms of protecting students. The behaviours covered by the briefing that University Scotland has provided goes beyond the criminal antisocial behaviour that's mentioned in the bill. I'm also pretty sure that all of us as members of parliament will have had the experience of dealing with cases where constituents have felt threatened by someone whose actions are not criminal but nevertheless pose a risk to others. And this amendment is about risk and protection. And the universities in Scotland need to have the freedom to be able to evict people who are posing a risk to others. This happens now and is handled discreetly and with great care by university accommodation managers up and down the country. It's subtle and it allows professional housing managers to take action to prevent problems before there is a criminal accusation, a criminal charge and a criminal conviction. This is sensible management. This is a sensible approach to offering a very difficult and sensitive problem. What this bill does is remove the ability of those professionals to do their job in the interests of all of the students and their care. And my amendment would put a reasonable and controlled amount of responsibility into the hands of those who are closest to the issues that I'm describing that require sensitive management. Now, I am very firmly of the view that this legislation that we're rushing through this parliament this week is going to be a disaster in terms of increasing homelessness and in terms of choking off the supply of available property for accommodation for rent. But let's put that aside for a minute. Threats, neighbourhood disputes, disruption, drug-taking, loud parties, abusive behaviour in our communities are a scourge and they are responsible for so much misery. There is no need for that to be tolerated within the confines of purpose-built student accommodation. Seven hundred thousand of our fellow Scots report having been victims of antisocial behaviour in the past three years, according to the Community Safety Group Resolve. To protect the minority of perpetrators, the government seemed to be prepared, in the context of purpose-built student accommodation, the government seemed to be prepared to be content to leave the lives of the majority of students in halls miserable because nothing can be done. So it's imperative, convener, that we allow, don't allow this to happen. It is imperative that we trust the professionals. It's imperative that we give them the power, the flexibility to run the institutions that they know best how to run, to protect the people that they know how best to protect. So as I say, in discussing this amendment, it simply is, I think, a common sense based proposal that allows universities to operate without this restrictive and disproportionate piece of legislation which will restrain them and leave our young people without adequate protection.
Thank you, Mr Kerr. I now call Jeremy Balfour to speak to amendment thirty-five and other amendments in the group. Mr Balfour?
Thank you, convener. Convener, it will not surprise you that Mr Harvey and I don't agree on many things politically. But the one thing we do agree on, and I think everyone in this chamber agrees on, is that we want as many homes as possible available for people to live in and we don't want empty homes lying empty over a number of months. And at this point, convener, I probably should declare that I am a member of the Church of Scotland. My amendments thirty-five and forty would give churches, which would give property tied to religious settings, an exemption from this legislation. This is done purely on a pragmatic way. It was introduced previously by my colleague Murdo Fraser. And I'm hoping maybe that the Scottish government have time to reflect on this. Because here is the practicality of where we are in Scotland today. There are many religious organisations, churches in particular, that have empty property because they don't have a minister or someone else to lead their particular denomination at this time. So take the example of the Church of Scotland. The Church of Scotland at the moment, I understand, have a fairly well blanket on no church being able to call a minister. That means if a church is vacant, it will remain vacant for foreseeable future. That is an empty property that could be let out to somebody within that community. But when that church is allowed to call a minister, it clearly needs that property back so that the minister can live there and then carry out his or her role within that community. And what this allows is for the church to let out its property, but when a minister is called, then that can then go back to the church. That would seem to me allowing, over this particular winter period, an opportunity for more homes to be used without the church never getting it back. And I would be interested if the minister, if he speaks within this section, could tell me why that is a bad thing at all.
Murdo Fraser?
I'm grateful to Mr Balfour for giving way. You'll recall, as he acknowledged, I raised these issues in relation to the previous Covid bill legislation, which addressed similar points. And at that point, I said the concern here was that there would be an unintended consequence, that churches would just refuse to rent out empty manses which would then lie without anybody living in them. That is now happening as a consequence of that legislation. This is an opportunity to put that right and bring these properties back into use. And I hope the government will take it.
Jeremy Balfour?
As always, I simply follow in the members' footsteps and absolutely he has got this right. And I say as a former minister myself that you do need somewhere to live when you're in that job. But as somebody who recognises there are empty homes at the moment, why not let them be let out? Why not help, particularly in areas where we need that housing? For similar, I would move on, convener, to amendments thirty-six and fifty-four in my name. This deals with another area which I think, again, would allow individuals to release property, particularly over these winter months, and allow them to be used for local people. As I'm sure we're all aware, that there are seasonal workers who will come on to agricultural and rural businesses to tide housing, but we only need them in the spring and summer time. Often, they will then lie empty over the winter period because the owner needs them back for the next season. We're stopping local people within local communities being able to benefit from that housing even on a short-term basis. And again, I would generally welcome to know why the minister thinks we shouldn't be releasing these types of property onto the market. Because why the, well, the minister's saying we're holding back. The reason we're holding back is we know from evidence, as Mr Fraser said, that churches and other people within rural agriculture areas are holding these properties back because they will need them at some point. Move away from dogma, be pragmatic, support these amendments. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Mr Balfour. I now call Mark Griffin to speak to amendment thirty-seven and other amendments in the group. Mr Griffin?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I have a series of amendments in groups four, five and six, where I lodge them to probe with the government. I understand the minister's ambition to make sure that this legislation is balanced in terms of the right of landlords and of the tenant. But amendments in these three groups just generally probe as to whether the balance has gone slightly too far in favour of the landlord as opposed to the tenant. In particular, in this group, amendments thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-one and forty-two, these ensure that exceptions related to substantial arrears and financial hardship on the part of the landlord can only apply when a high test of financial hardship applies as a direct result of those substantial arrears. So the hardship reported must be as a result of the arrears experienced. Secondly, I wanted to come on to the level of arrears. Now, a moratorium on evictions is what we are legislating for, and exceptions for substantial arrears provide, I feel, too wide an exemption for that moratorium. Hence, these amendments remove that exception entirely. Now, regarding the social sector, Celta advised that the average arrears for evicted tenants in twenty nineteen twenty was around nine thousand pounds. So in context, the bill sets the thresholds far too low, I feel, to be considered substantial at a level of just over two thousand pounds. And due to time constraints, what the substantial rent arrears definition has been removed from the list of exemptions, but the detail still is retained in the bill. And as my intention to come back at stage three, but ask members to support the amendments in my name in this group.
Thank you, Mr Griffin. And I call Miles Briggs to speak to amendment thirty-nine and other amendments in the group. Mr Briggs?
Thank you, convener. My amendment thirty-nine is in relation to landlords having the right to decant or evict tenants in the case of essential work and demolition, which I think is something which hasn't been discussed. Essential work, such as the removal of asbestos, can be dangerous to occupants. Therefore, we believe that landlords should be able to decant tenants from properties which are undergoing essential maintenance. Furthermore, landlords should also be able to evict tenants when buildings are to be demolished. Demolition could occur because a property is too old, unsafe for occupants. And therefore, we try to put this amendment forward to look towards keeping tenants safe as well. My second amendment with regard to amendment forty-three is in relation to landlords having the right to evict unlawful occupants. An unlawful occupier is a person that lives in a property without the consent of the homeowner. This could include people that were not initially agreed upon when the lease was signed. Therefore, landlords should have the right to evict. A landlord is unable to charge these occupants rent as they are not the tenant. So if the landlord is unable to evict, then due to the moratorium, it would represent a significant financial loss. This ground is already used commonly to evict tenants who have ended their tenancy but where the tenant has not notified the landlord and then not moved out. So I hope government will consider these in the light we've brought them forward as workable amendments.
Thank you, Mr Briggs. And I call the minister.
Thank you, convener. I'd like to draw amendment thirty-nine first of all, which Miles Briggs spoke to a moment ago, which exempts demolition of or substantial work on property within the social rented sector from the moratorium on evictions. We are keen to ensure that tenants are protected from eviction, but we recognise that being able to refurbish large accommodation will help many tenants. And we would expect tenants in these circumstances to be supported through that process, including being provided with alternative accommodation. So amendment thirty-nine is one that we intend to support. And I thank Miles Briggs for bringing it and encourage parliament to vote for it. In terms of some of the other amendments in this group, some are attempting to reduce the protection for tenants by increasing the exemptions from the moratorium, and others are attempting to remove some of the safeguards that we believe are needed, in particular around substantial rent arrears. And again, we come back to this theme, which has come out of several of the groups, around balance. We need a bill which achieves the level of protection that tenants need but also has safeguards within it. We believe that the bill as presented achieves that and we won't be supporting the other amendments in this group. Some of them, which seek to increase the exemptions from the moratorium and therefore reduce the level of protection, seem to be predicated on the idea that the government is holding properties back from rent. That is very clearly not the case. It would be possible, it would be possible, convener, for us to remove all tenants' rights and protections altogether. And this would work in the interest of those who want to become landlords but have complete flexibility working on their side. That would not be appropriate. All organisations which seek to become landlords have to accept that tenants who are moving into those properties, that becomes their home. And that home needs to be respected. Their rights and security at home need to be respected. I give way.
Jeremy Balfour?
But gentlemen, to accept, and I accept it's not something he wants, but it's happening, is that people are holding back property which could be used. So I accept it's an unforeseen circumstance, but this has been shown, what's happened in the last few months, that people are not putting property on the market which could be used because they're not getting the fear that they won't get the property back. And it is not better to have somebody in a home even for a short period of time rather than having them homeless.
Minister?
Well, the problem of empty homes has been one that's existed for a long time and successive governments, not just this government but previous governments, including way back to the days of the Liberal and Democrat administration, have continued to increase the effort that's been put into bringing empty homes into use. There's always going to be work to do, and I'm sure there's more that we can do, to create the right incentives for empty homes to be brought into use. But I don't think that should be achieved by reducing the protection of tenants for whom those properties would become home. And in the case of amendments thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-one and forty-two, which attempt to remove or weaken some of the safeguards that are needed around substantial rent arrears, I recognise that the provisions on rent arrears are one of the controversial areas. And as I said in the stage one debate, I thought long and hard about how and whether we present these measures as part of the package of safeguards. I believe that the support tenants facing rent arrears and substantial rent arrears really need is not necessarily the same as the support in other areas. It is direct support, and that's coming through discretionary housing payments, that's coming through the tenant grant fund, it's coming through the work that we're doing to raise awareness of tenants' rights and make sure that people are able to exercise those rights. So I do think that these particular amendments would weaken the package of safeguards to the point of not having a bill which strikes the appropriate balance. And I'll be coming on to Mr Kerr's amendment in a moment, but if he wants to give way, if he wants me to give way first? Okay. In relation to amendment forty-four.
The minister's given way?
Yes, I'll give way.
Bob Dorris?
The minister's given way. It was just on the level reached at for rent arrears by which evictions could potentially still proceed. Can I just get some assurance that that won't undermine the other protections that exist for tenants through pre-action protocols and pre-action requirements? In the case, do we still have to appear in court? And if the landlord was not seen as being reasonable, it would be thrown out by a court?
Minister?
Yes, indeed. The measures on pre-action protocols, which have been a requirement in the social rented sector for a long time, of course, and earlier this year, parliament agreed to make those permanent measures in relation to the private rented sector, that will not be bypassed in any way. And indeed, if an eviction measure goes to the tribunal, the requirement to take all circumstances into account and the test of reasonableness is still very important. In relation to amendment forty-four, if this was accepted, evictions could still go ahead as they do now, negating the point of including college/university halls of residence and purpose-built student accommodation within the moratorium. It also places a new duty on the first-tier tribunal to consider whether a student tenancy has failed to comply with the tenancy agreement and determine whether it's reasonable. Not only would that have an impact on the workload and the costs of the tribunal... Not only would that have an impact on the workload and the costs of the tribunal, but it would represent a new type of tenancy agreement for them to consider. Mr Kerr, quite properly and quite rightly, says that universities have a serious responsibility, a duty of care, and they do take that responsibility seriously, including in situations where one student may pose a risk to others. But the moving to eviction, that is a very serious measure, and it does require a high bar of evidence around that risk. And Mr Kerr's amendment gives me serious concern that any breach in the tenancy agreement, even a very minor breach in the tenancy agreement, could be used. If we accepted this amendment, the most minor breach could, in theory, be used. And even though that test of reasonableness would be applied if the case reached the tribunal, students in that situation would not have the security of knowing that if they breached their tenancy in any very minor way, they would not have the security of knowing that they couldn't be evicted. I give way.
Stephen Kerr?
Thank you. If the minister is concerned about the scope of this measure in relation to the way it's been written, then will he work with me in order to tighten it up so that the way that I've described it in my remarks to support the amendment, that that objective is satisfied? Would he be willing to work with me in order to achieve that? Because I think this is a worthwhile thing to work together on.
Minister?
I would say that I'm not currently persuaded that the concerns that Mr Kerr outlines are, you know, need a requirement to change the bill. But I'm content to have my officials contact him and explore what other approaches might be viable to meet his concerns. I don't believe that those concerns are validated at the moment in terms of the bill as we have it, but I'm perfectly content to have that discussion between my office and his before the amendment deadline for stage three.
Stephen Kerr?
Of course, would be happy to engage with his officials. But surely the minister accepts that University Scotland do know what they're talking about. And when they are focusing on this sort of an amendment, then that does add weight to the importance of it. They are the ones that have been dealing and constantly dealing with these issues in purpose-built student accommodation. I hope he would accept that.
Minister?
Well, I think it was Mr Fitzpatrick who may have mentioned that the briefing came out before they had seen the text of the bill. As I say, I'm not persuaded at the moment that there is a serious issue here that requires an amendment to the bill, but I'm happy to have my office and Mr Kerr communicate about that and explore whether any change might be justified before the stage three amendment deadline. Having said that, I would remind the chamber that I would urge members to support amendment thirty-nine but will not be supporting the other amendments in this group.
Thank you, minister. I call Murdo Fraser to wind up and to press or withdraw amendment thirty-three.
Well, thank you, presiding officer. I didn't actually hear any comment from the minister on amendment thirty-three, so I'm not entirely clear if there's any particular reason why the government is not supporting it. If Mr Harvey would like to intervene on me, I'd be happy to take an intervention.
Minister?
I'm happy to intervene. My general comment that some of the amendments were seeking to weaken or undermine the protections against evictions are, you know, not amendments that we would support. Other amendments are seeking to undermine the safeguards, and we don't support those either.
Murdo Fraser?
Frankly, he doesn't seem to understand his own bill, presiding officer, because my amendment does none of these things. It simply seeks to clarify on the face of the bill that the eviction ban will not apply to notice served before the sixth of September 2022. It's very clear from the policy memorandum that that is in line with the government's stated intent. I'm really surprised the minister is claiming it means something else entirely. I'm totally confused by that, so I will press that particular amendment, presiding officer. I would just say briefly in relation to other matters, I welcome the fact that the government will support my colleague Miles Briggs's amendment thirty-nine. In relation to amendment thirty-five, in the name of Jeremy Balfour, I think Mr Balfour made a very strong case there. Like Mr Balfour, I'm a member of the Church of Scotland. I'm aware that there are Church of Scotland properties currently lying empty that are not being offered up for rent and will not be offered up for rent because of the concern that the church has if they offer them for rent, they will not be able to resume possession should they be required for the purposes of hosting a minister or a pastoral worker. The minister said in response to Mr Balfour that properties are not being held back. That is simply not true. The minister hasn't done his homework, he hasn't engaged with stakeholders, he hasn't listened to those who have an interest in this particular field. If he had, he would know he is talking balderdash in this chamber. It is not true. It is not true that properties are not being held back. All he has to do is pick up the phone to the Church of Scotland or any other church, and he will hear the truth. He needs to start doing the work as a minister and stop being so lazy, presiding officer. Shocking.
Okay. Excuse me. Hello. Could we not have sedentary conversations across the chamber, please? The question is that amendment thirty-three be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed, and therefore we'll move to a division. The vote is now closed. Members, could I call you all to order, please? That includes every member in the chamber. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty-three in the name of Murdo Fraser is yes, thirty-one; no, eighty-one. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I now call amendment thirty-four in the name of Stephen Kerr, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Stephen Kerr, to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that amendment thirty-four be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are not agreed, and there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty-four in the name of Stephen Kerr is yes, twenty-nine; no, eighty-three. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment thirty-five in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Jeremy Balfour, to move or not move?
Move, convener.
The question is that amendment thirty-five be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. The vote is now closed. Point of order, Roz McCall.
Yeah, my apologies, my vote didn't go through. I would have voted yes.
Thank you, Ms McCall. That will be recorded. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty-five in the name of Jeremy Balfour is yes, twenty-nine; no, eighty-six. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment thirty-six in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Jeremy Balfour, to move or not move?
Move, convener.
The question is that amendment thirty-six be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty-six in the name of Jeremy Balfour is yes, twenty-eight; no, eighty-six. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment thirty-seven in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Move.
The question is that amendment thirty-seven be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty-seven in the name of Mark Griffin is yes, nineteen; no, ninety-six. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment thirty-eight in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. I call amendment thirty-nine in the name of Miles Briggs, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Miles Briggs, to move or not move?
This might present the most important part of my work this week, convener, so yes, moved.
The question is that amendment thirty-nine be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are all agreed. I call amendment forty in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Jeremy Balfour, to move or not move?
Timon, but no, convener.
I'm sorry, Mr Balfour, could you?
That's no, not moving.
Not moved.
Not, N-O-T.
Thank you. I call amendment forty-one in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. I call amendment forty-two in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call amendment forty-three in the name of Miles Briggs, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Miles Briggs, to move or not move?
Moved.
Moved. The question is that amendment forty-three be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on amendment number forty-three in the name of Miles Briggs is yes, twenty-nine; no, eighty-seven. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment forty-four in the name of Stephen Kerr, already debated with amendment thirty-three. Stephen Kerr, to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that amendment forty-four be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on amendment number forty-four in the name of Stephen Kerr is yes, twenty-nine; no, eighty-six. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. We now move on to the next group, which is safeguards for landlords' financial hardship. I call amendment forty-five in the name of Pauline MacNeil, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings, and Pauline MacNeil to move amendments. in the groupings, and Polly McNeil to move Amendment 45 and to speak to all amendments in the group. Ms McNeil.
Thank you very much. I speak to Amendments 45, 50, 56, 58, 65 and 66 in my name, and all related, the right to apply for a wrongful termination order. So these amendments seek to flag that a tenant can apply for a wrongful termination order if a landlord fails to take up the occupancy of the property. So if you look at the bill as drafted, if you look at the first section, it deals with landlords intend to sell the property, but I'm dealing with the second half of that. So paragraph four, it is an eviction ground that a landlord intends to live in the property to alleviate financial hardship, the suffering hardship, tends to alleviate that hardship by occupying the let property as a landlord's only or principal home. Nothing wrong with that. I have had many cases under current housing law, in which there are 17 grounds for eviction, and I have seen many cases where the landlord says, you are being evicted because I intend or my family intends to move into that property. Now, I appreciate that this division is narrower than that. However, I want to seek to probe this question because there's nothing here which provides that there's any evidence that the landlord has moved into the property. Now, can I say, for the purposes of probing this, I've come up with this suggestion, which could be three months of council tax, which you would expect to pay if you're actually living in the property. I think it's important when we're doing, especially because it's emergency legislation, it's quite rushed, to make sure that we haven't left any loopholes in relation to this, although you may think these cases are few and far between, and it may be that you think you can't resolve it because the tenant's already evicted. But I would say that these amendments seek to discourage landlords who decide to use financial hardship for the grounds of eviction to say that they need to move into the property of the renting out to evict a tenant, but subsequently do not move into that property and a new tenant moves in. As I say, I see it on the basis of constituency cases, which I dealt with at the beginning of the pandemic, where there were many people who had to move out of their property just simply because of a statement made by the landlord, I'd like this property, thank you very much. All I'm seeking to do is to flush out any landlords who may seek to do that, and I realise it might be a tiny minority, but if we're doing this legislation properly, I'd like to probe that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms McNeil. I call Mark Griffin to speak to Amendment 46 and other amendments in the group. Mr Griffin.
Thank you, convener. This group again continues on the theme that I feel, the government trying to strike a balance between landlords and tenants so as to not face challenge, that they've perhaps gone a bit too far in the balancing of rights toward the landlord rather than the tenants. These amendments in my name in this group say that a tenant should not lose their home because a landlord intends to sell or live in the property if they have no cause in the financial hardship of the landlord. It doesn't seem fair to me that a tenant should be forced out of a home through no fault of their own, and that would mean that the exception can only be used. We are keeping a tenant who had been building up arrears in the house until the, if they continue to build arrears up until the end of the eviction ban, would then cause the landlord significant financial hardship that that should be allowed. So in saying that, it would only be fair that that exception could be applied if the hardship was caused directly by the tenant themselves. Also, as an additional burden on the landlords, amendment set out that they must provide the tribunal with an affidavit of their intention to sell or live in the property, as well as evidence of their undertakings to sell, and the confirmation from a financial or money adviser or chartered accountant. Again, feel that perhaps we've gone too far in terms of the balance between landlords and tenant, and these amendments try and pull that back more in favour of the tenant. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Mr Griffin. I now call the minister.
Thank you, convener. I can only accept one amendment in this group, but there are a number of other amendments in the group where I'm sympathetic to the intention but can't facilitate and would offer the opportunity to work with colleagues. I'll address them in turn. Amendment 45, I can confirm that the existing protections against wrongful termination will apply to the emergency measures, and given that, I don't believe that this amendment is required. Amendment 46 seeks to link the definition of financial hardship to substantial rent arrears, and Mark Griffin sets out some of the reasons why he thinks that's justified. It is clear, though, that financial hardship can arise as a result of other factors that are also out with the landlord's control, and so in order to strike that balance, we believe that we have to recognise that a landlord who may have lost their job or a separate business has failed and they've ended up with debts that are unmanageable, may need to take action, not because of factors within their control, also not within factors within the tenant's control, but that they have the prospect of financial hardship and the only option that they may have is to sell or move into a property. So we believe that in order to meet the test of proportionality and balance, we believe that we have that right, and we don't think it would be appropriate to link the definition of hardship to the rent arrears. Amendments 47, 49, 55 and 64 all seek to require landlords who are seeking an eviction on the basis of one of these new grounds of financial hardship to provide specific types of information to the tribunal to evidence their hardship. Landlords must evidence this hardship, but the information that's required will depend on the circumstances of each case, and the tribunal is best placed to determine what specific information they see as necessary to determine whether the landlord is in financial hardship. I don't think it's appropriate, therefore, for us to mandate the specific information outlined by the amendment. But there are, of course, good examples in the amendment of the information that the tribunal may wish to request. So while I can't support this amendment today, I have spoken to the member, and I hope to be able to be in a position to support amendments addressing this at stage three. I am pleased to support Amendment 48, as this includes an affidavit from landlords that they intend to live in the let property as examples of the evidence that could be provided to the tribunal as part of an eviction case. Amendments 50, 56 and 65 all seek to require landlords to provide three months' worth of council tax statements to evidence that they have moved into the property that's been repossessed. These two seek to address an area that I am also concerned about. However, the tribunal does not have a role in ensuring that a landlord has moved into the property, except where a tenant makes a wrongful termination application. It's therefore not appropriate to require landlords to provide this information to the tribunal, and I can't accept these amendments. Amendments 53, 57, 62 and 63 all seek to require the first-tier tribunal to consider whether the tenant has been informed about all the support before being granted an application for eviction. I agree that this is vital support for tenants, but the pre-action protocols for rent arrears that we made a requirement, a permanent requirement during the Covid recovery bill, already ensure that landlords are required to do this, and the extent to which the landlord has complied will be taken into account by the tribunal when they determine whether it is reasonable to grant an eviction. I therefore don't support this amendment. Amendment 58 aims to ensure that a wrongful termination in relation to where a landlord fails to live in the let property would be considered an unlawful eviction. Unlawful eviction requirements provide protection for tenants where a landlord has not used the correct legal processes to end a tenancy. However, wrongful termination applies where they've used the correct legal process but have misled the tenant and the tribunal into ordering an eviction. I don't believe it's appropriate to combine these two separate processes. Amendment 66 creates an offence where a landlord repossesses a property under the 1984 Act, but then fails to move into the property. And again, while I'm sympathetic to the intention behind the amendment, it would not be appropriate to create a new criminal offence through temporary legislation. In addition, there are existing protections, both criminal and civil, for these circumstances, and so I can't support this amendment. An Amendment 67 again links substantial rent arrears to financial hardship, and as I said, in relation to Amendment 46, this would substantially reduce the safeguards that are part of the balance package we're presenting today, and I therefore can't support that amendment. So in summary, convener, I do support Amendment 48, but not the others in this group.
Thank you, minister. Polly McNeil to wind up, please, and to press or withdraw Amendment 45.
Thank you, presiding officer. I had wanted to intervene in the ministry, may have ever heard me, in relation to his statement that, in relation to Amendment 45, that there are existing protections will apply, but he didn't say what they were. I'm not clear what those protections are, because I don't think I'm the only member who's had cases where the landlord, so the landlord had to provide that hardship test. I'm not talking about the hardship test. What I'm talking about is the statement that the landlord then requires it to live in the property will never be tested, and I don't really understand in layperson's terms what the difference is between wrongful termination and an unlawful conviction, because if you wrongly terminate the contract because you see you're going to move into the property and you don't do it, surely that must be unlawful. And it's something at which, actually, it was Andy Whitehead who brought to the chamber in the last discussion we had about evictions during the coronavirus, that there are 17 grounds, and it is relatively easy, provided in this legislation, you pass the hardship test, to say you're moving into the property, and you don't. So I have to express a bit of disappointment that that point's not taken on board by ministers. I would probably have guessed what you would say about the remainder of the amendments. I openly said, I'm not suggesting that my amendments are the best way forward in order for the landlord to prove, but I stand by what I'm saying today, and that is that as the law stands, it's quite easy for landlords passing the first test to say they're moving into property, and no one will ever check if they've done that, and that unfortunately the poor tenant is already out the property. I don't know if you want to come back. Minister?
Minister?
I don't disagree for a moment, and I hope my remarks recognise the substance of the issues that Polly McNeil is raising. I don't disagree for a moment that there are substantial issues here. I suspect that these are best addressed in the longer-term review of the repossession grounds, which the government is already committed to in terms of making permanent change to the law. I don't think it's best addressed through these temporary measures in relation to emergency legislation. I'd be very happy to make sure that officials get in touch after we've finished with this legislation with Polly McNeil and other colleagues, to make sure that our longer-term work is well informed by the concerns that she raises. And like other members, I recognise some of these issues through my local postbag as well, and I suspect that there's great scope for working together on some of that longer-term work on this, but I don't think the emergency legislation is the right place for it.
Polly McNeil.
I thank the minister for that answer, and I accept that there are wider reforms needed. But I do want to get the substantive point on the agenda now, albeit for, so I'm going to push Amendment 45 for that reason, but the presiding officer indicated I will not be moving the other amendments when you come to ask me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms McNeil. The question is that Amendment 45 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 45 in the name of Polly McNeil is yes 21, no 90. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 46 in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment 45. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that Amendment 46 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 46 in the name of Mark Griffin is yes 19, no 86. There were no abstentions, and the amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 47 in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment 45. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Unlike the minister's comments, not moved.
Not moved. I now call Amendment 48 in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment 45. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Moved.
Moved. The question is that Amendment 48 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are all agreed. We're not all agreed, beg your pardon, and therefore there will be a division. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 48 in the name of Mark Griffin is yes 85, no 29. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore agreed. I call Amendment 49 in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment 45. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. I call Amendment 50 in the name of Polly McNeil, already debated with Amendment 45. Polly McNeil, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. We will now move on to the next group, which is Safeguards for Landlords' Substantial Rent Arrears. I call Amendment number 51 in the name of Mark Griffin, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. Mark Griffin, to move Amendment 51 and to speak to all amendments in the group. Mr Griffin.
Thank you, convener. This is the third grouping where, again, I've lodged amendments to attempt to... This is the third grouping where, again, I've lodged amendments to attempt to rebalance rights more in favour of the tenant than the landlord. The first example of this is the amendments in Route fifty three and others that are similar to state that a landlord must show that they have taken all steps to ensure that the tenant is informed about all support available, including that the tenant has exhausted applications for any local authority financial support to which the tenant is entitled. I feel that's a sensible measure, that before the substantial rent arrears ground would be granted, that a landlord has done all they can to point their tenant towards the support packages that are out there to alleviate the burden of those arrears, both on the tenant's debt and also a landlord. And again, I think that the hardship test should also be linked to the result of the arrears, as a result of arrears from that particular property. So, again, don't feel it's fair for a tenant to be evicted as a result of financial forces elsewhere, and that a landlord should have to prove that the hardship they experience is as direct a result from their arrears built up through that tenancy, and ask members to support all amendments in this group in my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Griffin. I now call Edward Mountain to speak to Amendment fifty two and other amendments in the group. Mr Mountain?
Thank you, Deputy Convena. Before I speak on Amendments fifty two, sixty one and sixty eight, I'd like to correct an error I made earlier this afternoon by chiding the minister for not understanding that a PRT was not for a fixed term, it is actually for an undefined period. That was actually in result to a comment that Ms MacNeil made. I thought it was made by the minister. The minister, however, did not correct her, which gives me some concern, but he accepts my apologies for, for, no, it is a substantial point, and when you're wrong, I always think it's worth admitting it. So, the amendments that I, Presiding Officer...
I'm not, sorry, is somebody trying to make a point of order? No. Mr Mountain, would you like to continue?
Sorry, Presiding Officer, I couldn't hear what was being said. I want to speak to Amendment fifty two, sixty one and sixty eight, and these relate to the period of time where substantial rent arrears could occur. Currently in the legislation, it is six months, I'm suggesting it is three months. Now, I'd like to make clear why I'm doing this. First of all, there seems to have been a conception peddled that all landlords are bad landlords. That is not the case. Most landlords are struggling to let their properties and want to do it at a fair rate, and you should bear, yes, of course, Minister.
Minister?
I'm grateful to the member for giving way. I wonder if he could just point to who it is during any of our debates or scrutiny on this bill who has said what he's just accused people of saying, and will he recognise that the government's position consistently is to recognise that not all landlords are in the same financial circumstances, and that it's a minority of landlords who behave in abusive or exploitative ways?
Edward Mountain?
And I thank the minister for that helpful clarification of the government's position, and it dispels some of the comments that have been made by other people, and I would say not him or the government. Now, what I would like to say is that landlords struggle to keep their properties let, and the reason for doing that is they want continuation of a tenancy, because every time a tenant moves out of the property, there are costs incurred, for example, carrying out an inventory, PAT testing, gas testing, to name but a few, advertising the property, and those costs could be in excess of eight hundred pounds per property. Now, that's an interesting figure, because that figure relates and correlates to the figure that is in the financial memorandum with this bill, which says that the average rent for properties in Scotland is about seven hundred and eighty pounds, in the region of seven hundred and eighty pounds. Now, that's an interesting figure as well, because if you take that as a figure and say that a rent arrears for three months would equate to over two thousand pounds, rent arrears for over four months would be four thousand pounds, if you then allow those rent arrears to build up, you are building up a problem for the tenant, because they will have to repay that, and my concern is that the longer that takes to come to a definition or a conclusion, the tenant's bills could be struggling, or he or she could be struggling further. So therefore, addressing the problem at the three months actually might not be a silly thing to do. It gives a chance for the tenant and the landlord to get together to try and find a solution. Because the problem with going with a first tier tribunal, evidence that's been given to me today suggests that it is six to nine months in Glasgow, could mean that by the time that if it is six months as proposed under this legislation, it could be fifteen months before the problem is resolved. Now, if you repay the rent arrears at fifty pounds a month, which seems to be a reasonable period, that means that the tenant could be paying those fifteen, fifty pounds per month for over fifteen years. That's an incredibly long period of time, and that causes me concern. I also would suggest that the longer the tenant is in arrears, the more difficult it is for the landlord to make the improvements, and I've made this argument earlier during the course of this debate. We all have an obligation to ensure that properties are properly insulated and costs are kept down. To give the minister an idea, I'm sure he knows these figures, replacing a boiler's probably about four thousand pounds on an average house, double glazing could be in the region of a normal house of six to seven thousand pounds, and insulation just for the house alone without including the floor could, by the time you redecorate it, be in the region of fifteen thousand. So every time the landlord loses money, we are delaying the point to net zero. Now, I would also say, I've made the point, I think, about landlords working with tenants, there's been no mention or no acknowledgement of the important part that the landlord registration plays at local government level. So landlords that don't measure up, landlords that are not good landlords, can be removed off the landlord register, which means they're not available to rent their property. Amendment seventy was done in a bit of a rush because of this emergency legislation, and I think it could be improved, and I asked the minister if he would consider, or his officials would consider with me, looking at Amendment seventy to allow me to include the word in there, available to tenants and landlords, so that both sides knows what the advice they need to consider when the value of rent that is in arrears have reached excessive levels. I think that would be helpful for both parties, and if the minister would be minded to consider that, then I would be happy to withdraw Amendment seventy at this stage and resubmit it at stage three. I'm happy to hear other arguments on the amendments that I've put forward, Presiding Officer.
Thank you. I call the minister.
Thank you, Convena. Amendments, I have to preface this, I'm afraid I won't be accepting any of the amendments in this group, and if the members move them to the vote, then I will have to ask Parliament to vote against them. Amendments fifty one and sixty seek to make the eviction ground for substantial rent arrears subject to the eviction ground of the landlord intending to live in the property to alleviate financial hardship. This appears to provide that a landlord could only evict a substantial rent arrears if they also intended to live in the property, and given that intent to live ground is a standalone provision already, which can provide the basis for evictions anyway, the effect of this amendment is to make the ground for eviction for substantial rent arrears redundant in most cases, and only applicable in cases where the landlord intends to occupy the property. This would significantly reduce the impact of the safeguard, the package of safeguards which we have said is balanced in terms of respecting and recognising the rights and interests of tenants as well as landlords. This amendment would interfere with that balance, and I think it would interfere with it in a way that would give rise to significant risk of challenge. Amendments fifty three, fifty seven and sixty three seek to place an obligation on presumably the landlord to ensure that the tenant is informed about all support available, including that the tenant has exhausted applications for any local authority financial support to which the tenant is entitled. I'm sure it's not intended to do this, but we believe that it would inappropriately require the landlord to make inquiries potentially of an intrusive nature into the financial affairs of a tenant, and many tenants may not want to share that information with their landlord. The tribunal, of course, already has discretion to explore whether the tenant has attempted to seek support, and indeed, if in circumstances where a pre-action protocol is required, whether that has been complied with. So we believe that the intention of these amendments is not necessary, and we would urge the member not to move them. And Amendments fifty nine and sixty nine seek to tie the link between the landlord's financial hardship as with the, as part of the landlord's intention to live in the let property with the tenant being in substantial rent arrears. These grounds are separate, because it's acknowledged that the cost of living crisis not only impacts on tenants but also impacts on landlords independently of whether their tenant is paying rent or not. If a landlord has lost their residence, for example, due to financial hardship, we do think it's unreasonable, sorry, we do think it's reasonable that they should be able to occupy a rental property that's owned by them, and it's the tribunal in each individual case which would determine whether eviction is reasonable in those circumstances. So again, I'm afraid I would ask the member not to move those amendments, and Parliament to vote against them if they are moved. As for Amendments seventy, and I think sixty two is consequential on seventy, we have considered carefully what the level of arrears should be, the appropriate level of arrears. We've concluded that six months' worth of rent is the appropriate level. A reduced threshold for triggering this eviction ground might see tenants becoming at risk of eviction even after a relatively short and temporary period of financial difficulty. We don't believe that this amendment should be supported, and I think it's worth reflecting that some in this debate have argued that a level of six months' rent arrears is setting the bar too low, others have suggested it's setting the bar too high, and again, we come back to this issue of balance. We do need to ensure that we have a balance package. We believe that that's what the bill represents at the moment, and so I can't support the amendments in this group, and would urge members not to press them, and members to vote against them if they are pressed, if I'm still able to give way.
Edward Mountain?
Thank you, Convena. Particularly Amendment seventy, I understand that you actually grouped seventy with fifty two, sixty one and sixty eight. Amendment seventy is particularly different, it's about advice to tenants and landlords, and you haven't covered that, Minister. I would be happy to withdraw it if you're, as I said, if you or your officials would work with me to allow advice to be developed for landlords and tenants. I think that would strengthen it, Minister.
Minister?
I offer as a sincere an apology to the member as he offered to me earlier. I think I may have glanced over some of my speaking notes about Amendment seventy, which seeks that the ministers make sure that advice is available for landlords on how to recoup rent arrears. A landlord will be able to go through the usual eviction proceedings in cases where a tenant has not paid their rent, and will also be able to pursue any existing remedies for recovery of arrears owed to them, and nothing in the bill impacts on the existing processes for landlords' recovery of rent.
Thank you, and I call Mark Griffin to wind up and press or withdraw Amendment fifty one.
Thanks, Convena. Thank members for engaging in the debate, thank the minister for his comments in response, and seek permission to withdraw Amendment fifty one.
Thank you. Mr Griffin seeks to withdraw Amendment fifty one. Does any member object? No member objects, and Amendment fifty one is withdrawn. I call Amendment fifty two in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Edward Mountain, to move or not move?
Moved, Convena.
The question is that Amendment fifty two be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed, we'll move to a vote, a member should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number fifty two in the name of Edward Mountain is yes, twenty seven, no, eighty seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment fifty three in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. I call Amendment fifty four in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment thirty three. Jeremy Balfour, to move or not move?
Not moved, Convena.
Thank you. I call Amendment fifty five in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment forty five. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. I call Amendment fifty six in the name of Pauline MacNeil, already debated with Amendment forty five. Pauline MacNeil, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. I call Amendment fifty seven in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment fifty eight in the name of Pauline MacNeil, already debated with Amendment forty five. Pauline MacNeil, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment fifty nine in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty one in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Edward Mountain, to move or not?
Not moved.
Thank you. I call Amendment sixty two in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty three in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty four in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment forty five. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty five in the name of Pauline MacNeil, already debated with Amendment forty five. Pauline MacNeil, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty six in the name of Pauline MacNeil, already debated with Amendment forty five. Pauline MacNeil, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty seven in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment forty five. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment sixty eight in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Edward Mountain, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. I call Amendment sixty nine in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Mark Griffin, to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment seventy in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment fifty one. Edward Mountain, to move or not move?
I'm not moving it, I look for an amendment at stage three.
Thank you. The question is that Schedule two be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
Thank you. We now move on to the group entitled duty to provide information and advice. I call Amendment seventy one in the name of Paul Sweeney, grouped with Amendment seventy three. Paul Sweeney, to move Amendment seventy one and speak to all amendments in the group.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I rise to move Amendment seventy one in my name, and I support the principle of this legislation, and I hope that this amendment will be received by the government. by the government in the spirit as intended, to be constructive and non-contemptious. I welcome the fact that the government have brought this legislation forward. And although I do think it could and should have been done sooner, it should go further and ultimately it should do more to address the fundamental imbalance of power that exists between tenants and their landlords. However, in the absence of increased protection and considering what the minister has said regarding legal challenge, I do think we should now be looking at how we communicate and inform those affected by the legislation of their rights under this legislation and where they can receive advice and support during the period that the legislation is in force. The Scottish Government's Programme for Government admirably set out intentions of increasing the rights and protections available to tenants. It committed to a tenants' rights campaign that would showcase existing rights and ensure that tenants are aware of their ability to challenge rent rises. While that is admirable, the requirement for it becomes even greater with the increased rights contained in this bill. As such, I believe it makes sense to include an obligation on the government to take steps to ensure that the new provisions contained in this bill when it is enacted are communicated clearly and concisely to those impacted by its provisions. It is a minor adjustment to the legislation but one that will guarantee all tenants are aware of their rights and that all tenants can easily access information and advice and that all tenants know where to access support if they need to do so. Research from Rent Better conducted in May of this year found that tenants in Scotland have low awareness of their rights. Against the backdrop of a cost of living crisis and in the wake of new tenant protections coming to force with the introduction of this bill, it is vitally important that we do everything in our power to ensure that tenants are well-informed when it comes to their rights. And by doing so, we may not fully redress the balance of power that exists between tenants and landlords, but we will at the very least begin to enable tenants to exercise their rights. So I would encourage the government to take this amendment in the spirit in which it is intended, to add to and complement what is already there, not to distract from it.
Thank you. I call Mark Griffin to speak to amendment seventy-three and other amendments in the group.
Thank you. Convena, I speak to ask members to support the amendment in my name, number seventy-three, but also the amendment seventy-one in my colleague's name. Amendment seventy-three places a duty on the Scottish Government compelling them to write to tenants and landlords, giving advice and information on the rent freeze and eviction bans. I raised this at stage one yesterday and was pleased to get support for that principle across the chamber. And as I indicated in the debate yesterday, communication about the cap, the moratorium and the rights to enforce protection is key. In May, Rent Better reported that there is a lack of confidence and actually most would say fear amongst residents, tenants exercising their rights due to a perceived potential repercussion of rent increases or perhaps even losing their home. The duty would come into force as part one does and a registered landlord is defined as those on the landlord register, as there is likely no register of tenants. Ministers should write to those properties addressed to the tenant, recorded on the register. I hope that would give tenants the information that they need to confidently challenge any landlord who would decide to act illegally and just hope that their tenants were misinformed and simply paid a higher rent and ask the members of the chamber to support amendments seventy-one and seventy-three.
Thank you. I call the minister.
Thanks, Convena. We are happy to support amendment seventy-one, but we can't support amendment seventy-three. Amendment seventy-one would require Scottish ministers to take steps to ensure that tenants affected by the rent cap and the evictions moratorium receive appropriate information, advice and support. We are, of course, committed to taking those steps and already have plans in place, including through our cost of living campaign, to raise awareness of tenants' rights and the support available to them, and are happy to accept that in the bill. Amendment seventy-three would require that Scottish ministers write to all registered landlords and residential addresses on the landlord register. It is, of course, important that landlords and tenants are fully aware of their responsibilities and their rights. We will therefore work with local authorities to ensure all registered landlords are informed about the emergency measures and support available to their tenants. It's vital that tenants have the right information too. However, we know that a blanket approach would not be the best or most cost-efficient way to contact tenants and landlords, and that's why we won't support it. We will, though, employ a full range of communication channels to ensure a broad and effective reach of our messages. So I would urge members to support amendment seventy-one but not to support amendment seventy-three.
Thank you. I call Paul Sweeney to wind up and press or withdraw amendment seventy-one.
I rise just to thank the government for the constructive way in which they've engaged with my proposed amendment and to move it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The question is that amendment seventy-one be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The question is that section three be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
I call amendment seventy-two in the name of Jamie Green, already debated with amendment eight. Jamie Green to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. I call amendment seventy-three in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment seventy-one. Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Not moved.
The question is that section four be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
I call amendment, oh, my apologies. We move on to the group entitled expiry suspension of provisions. I call amendment seventy-four in the name of Mark Griffin, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. And can I point out that if either amendment seventy-seven or amendment seventy-eight are agreed to, I can't call amendment seventy-nine due to preemption. Mark Griffin to move amendment seventy-four and speak to all amendments in the group.
Thank you, Convena. I move amendment seventy-four and ask members to support the other amendments in this group in my name. Amendment seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six ensure that an eviction ban is in place from October twenty twenty-three to March twenty twenty-four, regardless of whether the remainder of the provisions of the bill have been extended. All exceptions already in the bill, for example concerning antisocial behaviour, criminal behaviour abandonment would apply. These amendments relate to the whole of schedule two and provide that if the schedule is suspended, it must be revived over winter. The amendments expire the provision on the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-four so that it's not subject to the expiry date in the bill or any earlier one that could be provided for in regulations. The government's new deal for tenants' consultation found that a substantial majority, ninety per cent of those answering the question, thought that additional protections against the ending of tenancies during the winter period are needed. The intention here is to ensure that winter eviction ban is in place, it's in place for this winter and then continues for next winter ahead of the new housing bill becoming law, and I ask members to support amendment seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six.
Thank you. I call Miles Briggs.
Thank you, Convena. My amendment number seventy-seven looks to put in place a point at which this legislation would expire. The first minister has stated that such interventions into the housing market must be time-limited. This is emergency legislation and we believe that it must have an end date. We therefore, in terms of this bill, note that ministers are already signalling two potential extensions, which would make this at least eighteen months that this legislation will sit on the statute book. Examples from other countries such as Sweden and Ireland have indicated that prolonged controls on rents can lead to significant housing shortages, which in turn hurt potential tenants and homeless people trying to access tenancies, especially private tenancies. Therefore, I hope members will support my amendment seventy-seven to actually put in place an expiry date for this legislation.
Thank you. I call Jeremy Balfour to speak to amendment seventy-eight and other amendments in the group.
Thank you, Convena. Convena, one of the advantages of modern technology is that constituents can contact you as the debate goes on. I received this email a few moments ago from one of my constituents here in Edinburgh. I have four HMO properties housed and twenty-one tenants. If this legislation is passed tomorrow, I will need to sell up now. No option. And unfortunately, these youngsters will have to be evicted. That is the consequence of this legislation that this government is forcing through. And when these twenty-one people come to Mr. McPherson's surgery asking, where can I live? I hope he can look them in the eye and say, you could have had a safe house if I hadn't voted for this legislation. That's what you're doing today, Mr. McPherson. Convena, I want to move amendment seventy-eight and eighty-two in my name. Eighty-two was in fact inspired by my good friends Bob Doris and John Mason in their speeches yesterday afternoon in the chamber. We have been told again that this is emergency legislation, that's why it can't be scrutinised, that's why it has to be rushed through in three sittings of this parliament. If that is right, then we should have no further extensions should be allowed. We should come back and review it in an appropriate way. If this bill is truly designed as an emergency power with short-term measures, then all future extensions should not be allowed and instead, the government should bring forward new primary legislation which can be fully scrutinised by the whole of this parliament. What this government is suggesting is that if they want to extend this, and I think they already pretty well clearly said they do, that it will be done by regulation. And as everyone knows within this chamber, regulations cannot be amended. They can simply be voted for or against. It gives parliament no scrutiny to make changes to anything that they would look at, which means you either take it all or you leave it all. That, to me, does not seem appropriate and that is why I brought forward amendment seventy-eight. None of us know what the situation is going to be like in six months. None of us know how this legislation will work. We can guess that more people are going to be homeless, because we're hearing that already from people writing in. But we don't know that. We don't know what the economic situation is going to be, what we should be doing if it is required. Bring forward legislation, don't just take a power grab to yourselves. I move both amendments in my name, Convena.
Thank you. I call Willie Rennie to speak to amendment seventy-nine and other amendments in the group.
Thank you, Convena. Even though I'm still crushed by Bob Doris's rejection of my earlier amendments, I'm back for another attempt to give him another chance to redeem himself. I will speak to amendment seventy-nine, which seeks to remove the social sector from the power to extend post-March next year. Earlier, I sought to remove the social housing sector from the scope of the bill altogether, but now I seek a more modest attempt to limit it to March next year. Housing associations set their rents once per year in conjunction with tenants, with the majority seeing any changes to rent take effect from April the first each year. Removing the ability to extend the term of the cap would give housing associations and councils the certainty they need to plan for the year ahead and engage as they normally would do with tenants and rent levels and service levels as well. The ability to extend the cap and remove housing associations and councils' control over their income would also damage investor confidence in the social housing sector in Scotland. Now, the indications from the minister through today and yesterday have been that the social housing sector could be decoupled post-March. That's a good sign. All my amendment seeks to do is to confirm that now rather than waiting until later. So I'd urge members to vote for amendment seventy-nine to remove the uncertainty now, which will give benefits to councils, to housing associations and also their tenants.
Thank you. I call the minister.
Thank you, Convena. I promised the chamber it's, there's nothing deliberate in the fact that the Cabinet Secretary chose to lead on the group where we're being magnanimous and I'm once again having to be here asking Parliament to vote against the amendments in a group. But amendments seventy-four and seventy-five in this group would require the moratorium on evictions to be in place over next winter, regardless of whether ministers consider them to be necessary and proportionate at the time. And if they've been expired before then, they would have to be revived. As we've stated on a number of occasions, this emergency legislation needs to be justified in terms of its necessity and its proportionality in relation to the context that we're living in. And I'm afraid that these amendments would undermine that. This would be a dilution of the ongoing requirements that we built into this bill in recognition of the fact that emergency legislation is a serious step for government and Parliament to take. The ongoing requirements which will allow them to be extended for two-six month periods, where we consider them, the provisions, to be remaining necessary and proportionate. That's an important safeguard and I don't think it would be appropriate to have it set aside. Amendment seventy-six supports amendments seventy-four and seventy-five, so I can't support that either. Amendment seventy-seven would remove Scottish ministers' power to extend the provisions for those two subsequent periods of six months altogether. And amendment seventy-eight also removes the Scottish ministers' power to extend the provisions for two subsequent periods of six months. And instead, any extension under amendment seventy-eight would have to be done through a further primary act of the Scottish Parliament. We consider that being able to have these measures in place for a potential period of eighteen months is fundamental to the protection for tenants that we're proposing in this bill. And so I can't support amendments seventy-seven or seventy-eight. Mr. Balfour says that it would be appropriate to come back and review these measures in an appropriate way. And that is precisely what is already built into the bill, just as it was for previous emergency legislation, very clear provisions on review periods and a requirement for Parliament to be consulted if any future decisions on extension or expiry are proposed. Amendment seventy-nine would prevent the power to extend the expiry of the bill as regards Scottish secure tenancies and Scottish short-secure tenancies. As I set out, tenants in the social rented sector are some of the most vulnerable to the cost crisis in our society. And we do require to be able to extend the provisions if necessary to those tenants beyond thirty-first of March if that's needed. I want to re-emphasise here, as I have repeatedly, the confidence that we have from the conversations we've already been undertaking with the social rented sector, that we can work collaboratively with the sector and that may be an alternative to an extension after the end of March. But this amendment would preempt that work that we need to take forward with the sector. I give way to Mr. Doris.
I thank the minister for giving way. My good friend Willie Rennie was suggesting during his contribution that if his amendment was passed, that would allow social landlords to go with their statutory duty to consult on potential rent increases. You can confirm there's nothing to prevent them in this legislation to go on with that consultation anyway.
Minister.
Indeed. Not only is there nothing to prevent them from consulting, that consultation is a very fundamental and important part of the way the social rented sector operates. And we encourage them not only to continue that, we also encourage tenants to participate in those consultation processes which will inform the decisions around rent setting after the end of March. Mr. Rennie says that the zero per cent cap that's in place for the first six months could be decoupled. Not only could it be, it very clearly within the bill operates separately, as a separate cap between the social and rented sector. So yes, it could well be decoupled. But I can't commit now to guarantee that it won't need to operate at any level at all after the thirty-first of March. To do so would preempt and potentially even undermine the very positive and constructive dialogue that we're having between government and the social rented sector. Finally, Convena, amendment eighty-two would delete section six entirely, meaning that the bill could not be extended beyond the thirty-first of March next year. And I think members will understand that quite obviously I cannot support that. So once again, I urge members not to move the amendments in this group. If they are moved, I urge Parliament to reject them.
Thank you. Mark Griffin to wind up and to press or withdraw amendment seventy-four.
Thank you, Convena. I appreciate the minister's comments on the introduction of a winter moratorium on evictions going beyond the period where government would be assessing whether the legislation was appropriate or not. I do think it could take- I do think they could take comfort from the fact that over 90% of respondents to the consultation on a new deal for tenants said that they supported that measure. And I would be happy to seek permission to withdraw if it was given assurance by the minister that it's a policy and a proposal that the government would seek to take forward in that housing bill.
Minister.
The member is asking if we are continuing to commit to work collaboratively with colleagues on the longer-term work that we have under the new deal for tenants. I can absolutely give that assurance. As I say, I don't think it's appropriate to make longer-term permanent changes within the emergency legislation.
Okay. I mean, I think I was looking for a more concrete commitment, not just to work constructively across all years, which I do look forward to on that particular point, on the policy and principle of a winter moratorium on evictions. But Presiding Officer, given the discussions that we've had, I look to continue the conversation and the discussion as other legislation progresses as well, and seek permission to withdraw amendment 74.
So Mr Griffin is not moving amendment 74. I call amendment 75 in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment 74. Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Not moved.
The question is that section 5 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
I call amendment 76 in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with amendment 74. Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call amendment 77 in the name of Miles Briggs, already debated with amendment 74. Miles Briggs to move or not move?
Moved.
And I point out that if amendment 77 is agreed to, I cannot call amendment 79 due to a preemption. The question is that amendment 77 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed, therefore we'll move to a vote, and members should cast their votes now. The result of the vote on amendment number 77 in the name of Miles Briggs is yes, 28; no, 88. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment 78 in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with amendment 74. Jeremy Balfour to move or not move?
Move, Convenor.
Thank you. I point out that if amendment 78 is agreed to, I cannot call amendment 79 due to a preemption. The question is that amendment 78 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed, therefore we'll move to vote, and members should cast their votes now. The result of the vote on amendment number 78 in the name of Jeremy Balfour is yes, 27; no, 86. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. Therefore, I call amendment 79 in the name of Willie Rennie, already debated with amendment 74. Willie Rennie to move or not move?
Based on the assurances provided by the minister, I'm not going to move.
Thank you. We move on to the group entitled Additional Information to be Provided by Scottish Ministers. I call amendment 80 in the name of Mark Griffin, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. Mark Griffin to move amendment 80 and speak to all amendments in the group.
Thank you, Convenor. I move amendment 80 in my name. Amendment 80 is one drafted and lodged on the recommendation of the Scottish Federation of Housing Associations. Amendment 80 requires ministers as part of their review processes to assess the impact of an extension to part one on the ongoing viability of the tenant grant fund and the funding for the Affordable Housing Supply Programme.
Excuse me, just before I take your point of order, Mr Balfour, can I remind members that there is debate ongoing, and be very grateful if all conversations could cease? Mr Balfour?
That's my point of order. I couldn't hear Mr Griffin.
Thank you. Please continue, Mr Griffin.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I outlined yesterday the substantial concerns about the freeze on the social sector and their ability to continue their plans to build new affordable housing, which directly tackles Scotland's housing crisis, as well as maintaining and upgrading their existing properties. They've rang the alarm bells, and for one association in my region, Avon Hill Housing Association, it could mean suspending all investment programmes well into 2024. Now, given that seven in 10 social tenants receive housing benefit or universal credit, the majority of social tenants will not benefit from a freeze but could potentially lose out on investment in their own homes, where rent is paid by the UK government, so then are the increases. And modelling from SPICE have shown that would mean approximately 30 million pounds lost from the housing sector based on a 3% rise next year, with that money being instead retained by the UK Treasury. Amendment 87 has been lodged because I think it's absent from any provision to consult relevant parties in the review process required to consider whether part one remains necessary and proportionate. This amendment makes this requirement, which has been a serious criticism of the emergency legislation process, a formal requirement. I hope that formal consultation can go some way to resolving that issue, and ask members to support amendment 80 and 87.
Thank you. I call Jamie Green to speak to amendment 81 and other amendments in the group.
Thank you, Convenor. Can I first of all put on record our comments on Mark Griffin's amendment number 80? I think he makes some very valid points reflecting the views that many of us have heard. I certainly wrote to all the housing associations in my region about the very points that he's just made, very valid points. We would support his amendment if were he to push it, I should add, and got a number of very detailed responses in it. I think for the benefit of time, I won't go into them in detail, but a number of them made that very point. Horizon Housing, for example, in my region specifically said that the rent freeze will impact our future cash flow projections and reduce our ability to invest in our homes. That's something we've been talking about, but I've got it in black and white. Well, what does that mean, investing in homes? Not just new homes, but resulting in less kitchens, bathrooms, boilers, heat pumps, fabric, first works, et cetera, and they go on and on and on. Another group, the Clock Housing Association, said that this will have a negative impact on the services that they offer to their tenants, and is a major concern to them. The Link Group, another housing association in my area, say something similar. The Hanover Group, again, I've got reams and reams and reams of all this. So I think, you know, I would really urge members to think carefully about voting against amendment 80 if it is pushed by the member. My amendment 81, though, comes to the issue around extension. We have heard, of course, that this is emergency legislation with a finite end life. Some do have concerns that the 18-month provision does stretch a little bit too far. There's nothing temporary by 18 months. It's a long time to put into place a policy like that. But I don't think, well, very few people, I think, really believe that this is a temporary measure. I think there's a real fear, as is evident in the responses that we've had from the market, that this is something that will, this mission creep will go on and on, because it's highly unlikely that the wider cost of living issues that have been discussed by members and by ministers are going to clear up or go away any time soon. So the fear is therefore that there will be an inevitability that the government will come back and say, oh, we have to keep going with these measures. So what I'm asking for, and specifically in amendment 81, is that when it comes to that crunch point in March 2023, when ministers do come back to report and make a statement to Parliament, I mean, ideally, it should have been a new act, as members have indicated in other amendments, but if it's a continuation of the emergency legislation, then I have added some extra parameters of data, because I think data is what really should be driving this, specifically rent levels, the number of evictions that have taken place, the number of rental properties available on the housing market, and the level of rent arrears. And I believe that all of that data should be available to government. If it's not, I would be worried and concerned. If it is available and it doesn't want to include it in the statement, I would equally be worried. If, of course, some of that data is just simply not available, that's fine too. It's a stage two amendment. I'm happy to work with ministers if he thinks that that sounds a bit onerous. We can take some of it out, we can add to it if he thinks it's a helpful idea. So it'd be really interesting hearing the government's views, and if they are minded to push back on this amendment, I would ask why. Amendments 88 and 89 do something slightly similar, but these are on the wider reporting requirements around what this rent cap means. Again, asking for empirical data from them specifically around average rent levels, the number of rental properties in the market, and the level of rent arrears. But it goes on further this time, because what I'm asking ministers to identify is that if there is a notable decline in any of these metrics, and that's the key here, then amendment 89 asks them to come back to Parliament and say what they're going to do to address this. Now, for example, if there is a notable reduce in the stock of housing available in the rental market as a by-product of the legislation we pass, what is the government doing about it? If more people are being evicted for whatever reason, what is the government doing to address that? If rent arrears are markedly increasing, what is the government doing to address that as well? So I hope these are helpful amendments to the Parliament, because ultimately, it will be we, it will be all of us who will have to give consent to the extension of that in March of next year, and I look forward to hearing the government's comments on these amendments.
Thank you. Pam Duncan-Lancey to speak to amendment 83 and other amendments in the group.
Thank you, Presiding Officer, and I will speak to all amendments in this group in my name. This bill is firmly about helping to alleviate the cost of living crisis by freezing rents, and as outlined yesterday, I support that bill. But this crisis affects so many areas of our lives and so many people. In its midst, we need wide-ranging and bold action, action that delivers help to the people who need it for all the things that they need help with. And people need to know that we as legislators are listening and understand the scale of the problems they face today. As legislators, we must remain focused on the variety of measures that impact the cost of living crisis, and government must always be transparent about what they're doing to help. That's what I'm seeking to do with my amendments today. In amendments 83 and 91, I'm asking the government to define the cost of living. Doing so is good legislative practice, and as I strongly support the principles of this bill, I want to do all I can to make it as robust as possible. If the government believe, as I do, that the cost of living crisis is strong enough to demand emergency legislation, I think it's only right that the act should say what it means by the cost of living and list the various pressures on pockets this winter. Clear language makes for better legislation that is more easily implemented by the people responsible for making it work, and it makes it clearer to people in our regions that we understand the totality of their hardship. Because while this bill addresses a key factor by reducing the cost of living for people who rent, it will necessarily only reach one portion of the population, and it will only affect one of the many increasing bills people will face. That's why in amendment 91, I've set out a list of areas that are affecting the cost of living. Presiding Officer, crises by their nature need fast action, and that needs transparent decision-making. And so in amendments 84 and 86, I'm seeking to improve transparency on decision-making by asking the government to set out what they have taken, what action they have taken into account, what they have taken into account, forgive me, in prioritising action on cost of living, which I support, and what other action they have taken and will take to alleviate that cost of living on the basis of the various factors set out in amendment 91. This clarity, I think, is important, because people need to be clear about what the government has done to help and why. And we've heard some claims that the government have spent £3 billion on this crisis, but we know from SPICE that only one-sixth of that is actually new funding. People in our regions do need to know what we're all doing to help them, and Parliament needs accurate and detailed information to be able to hold the government to account on actions, particularly when they're taking in the midst of a crisis and at pace. Amendment 91 will help this by ensuring the government set out clearly the actions they're taking through this crisis. Lastly, Presiding Officer, amendment 90 is a procedural one that clarifies the process for social landlords during the passage of the bill. It creates an opportunity to allow the government to set out when it will let Parliament know whether the rent freeze and other provisions in the bill are to be extended. I'm moving this amendment on behalf of social housing providers who have been in contact with my party to outline how helpful it would be to know in January or February what the government intends to do on extending the provisions or not for the purposes of their planning procedures, for example, consulting with tenants over future rent levels. In the midst of a crisis, we need bold action and decisions that will help the most people. The government can only do that if they set out where action is needed and what action they've taken, so that they can monitor it. And we on these benches can only help them if we can see what they've done and what they've still to do. That is what all the amendments lodged today in my name aim to address, and I hope the government will take them in that good faith and support them. Presiding Officer, I urge members to back the amendments in my name, and I move the amendments in my name.
Thank you. I call Paul Sweeney to speak to amendment 85 and other amendments in the group.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I stand to speak to amendment number 85 in my name, following the government's acceptance of my earlier amendment number 71 on provision of information and support for tenants. This second amendment would put a duty on ministers to report on their progress with regards to keeping tenants informed of their rights, as outlined in my earlier amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I call Edward Mountain to speak to amendment 92 and other amendments in the group.
Thank you very much, Convenor, and I've been taken by the fact that there have been amendments lodged in this group which all seek to achieve the same thing, which is to hold the government to account as a result of this emergency legislation. We are all trying to work out what the effects will be and how those will affect not only landlords but also tenants, and therefore, housing in Scotland. I'm taken by Mark Griffin's comments, Pam Duncan-Lancey's comments, I can't agree with all your amendments, but some of them, Jamie Green's and Paul Sweeney's, I like them because they are making the government answer the questions on the legislations they put forward. Therefore, my amendment, which is amendment 92, is to further hold the government to account, and that is, when it comes to section 8, is to ask after the expiry of part one that Scottish ministers prepare a report on the cost and effect on landlords and tenants, and the cost to Scottish ministers, including the loss of income from taxation, which is not covered in the financial memorandum properly with this bill. Therefore, I think, Presiding Officer, that if the four of us, five of us, got together and drafted an amendment to make a proper reporting procedure for this government, there would be huge merit in doing that. But I do think that what the government are saying they want to do... But I do think that what the government are saying they want to do, which is taking a review of the operations of provisions with Part 1 to review of considering whether they remain necessary and proportionate, is all they have to say is they are necessary and they are proportionate, and that is the end of their report. That, to me, Convenor, is not sufficient.
Thank you. I call the Cabinet Secretary.
Thanks, Convenor. Before I come on to the amendments specifically, I just wanted to reiterate a point made by Patrick Harvey earlier on around the position of the social rented sector and to give assurance to some of the points that Matt Griffin and others raised. We've made it very clear throughout yesterday and today that the success and continued investment by the social rented sector is crucially important, crucially important to the delivery of the Affordable Housing Supply Programme. And that's why we have said, and it's been received well by the sector, that we will work with them. We have the structure already set up through the Task and Finish Group, and we want to do that at pace and certainly before the review period in order to make a judgment going forward about what happens from the 1st of April next year. And we want to do that in partnership with the sector. So it's not about us doing it to the sector. The agreement will be an agreement with the sector. Yes.
Thank you, Cabinet Secretary. Just if you recognise, though, that the sector now is rewriting its 10-year business plans and cancelling affordable home projects, which we all want to see built.
Cabinet Secretary.
Well, the sector is bringing forward affordable homes projects as we speak, and they are delivering affordable homes. I know this is something Miles Biggs doesn't like to hear, but they are delivering affordable homes. The figures were just out yesterday, that we've had 113,000 more affordable homes delivered, 79,000 for social rent since April 2007, way, way ahead of anything the UK government has delivered on affordable housing. What we need to do going forward, though, and the sector is wanting to do this, is to make sure that the agreement with the Scottish government around what happens from April next year meets a number of criteria. One is that it continues to deliver affordable homes. One is that it ensures that tenants' rents are affordable going forward, and that we make sure that the sector can continue to support tenants and tenants' welfare, because we know that that's what they do well. So we will get on with working with the sector to make sure all of that is delivered. Now, turning to the amendments specifically, Amendment 80 requires the Scottish government to include information about funding. The statement will be much more comprehensive than that, and we will include all relevant information. And for that reason, Amendment 80 is not required, and therefore, we don't support it. Amendments 81, 88 and 89, we can't support these amendments for the following reasons. The statement of reasons required under Section 6.6, when Scottish ministers wish to extend the expiry date of this bill and report required under Section 8.1, setting out why Scottish ministers believe these measures remain necessary and proportionate in connection with the cost of living, will be evidence-based, just as we've set out the evidence for this bill in the accompanying documents we've prepared, and we would expect to be challenged if it were anything else. Amendments 81 and 88 are not necessary. Amendment 85, I'm content to support Amendment 85, in line with our acceptance of Amendment 71. Amendments 83, 84, 86, 90 and 91, Convenor, Pam Duncan-Lancey's amendments create a very tight definition of cost of living, which would restrict the ability to include other key economic factors, such as levels of income, which all have a key impact on the cost of living. Some parts of the definition that is set out in this amendment are not directly relevant to the protection of tenants through a rent cap and eviction moratorium and are not within the scope of this legislation. The ordinary meaning of cost of living is appropriate and does not require an amendment to the legislation. And further, the amendment includes elements that are outside the scope of this parliament's legislative competence, such as energy. So for those reasons, we urge members not to support those amendments. Amendment 87, Convenor, will introduce a new requirement to consult before undertaking the reporting reviews we've already set out in the bill. And given that we will consult with the persons and bodies set out by Mr Griffin on an ongoing basis anyway, we are content to accept this amendment. Amendment 92, we can't support. Ministers will, of course, consider the impacts of this bill, and of course, this parliament can debate those. So to summarise, we've tried to accept where we can. Yes.
Jamie Green.
I appreciate the Cabinet Secretary taking my intervention. I mean, summing up, it sounds like the government is saying no to all of these amendments from a number of members from all across the chamber, which simply seek to enhance the levels of scrutiny, that the parliament can provide the extension of the measures. It seeks to expand the amount of data that is made available to us and that the government must gather and analyse, simply by saying that we will make a statement and it'll all be fine and trust us on it. I fail to see any coherent rationale as to why the government's pushing back on all of these amendments. Surely there must be some give on this at stage two.
Cabinet Secretary.
The Tory benches would listen to what is said. I've just said that I'm accepting Amendment 85 from Paul Sweeney and Amendment 87 from Matt Griffin. So, you know, to say that we're not accepting amendments, if you actually just listen to what people say, you would actually perhaps not have to make interventions that are a bit silly, to be honest. Anyway, I'm content to accept. Yes. Yes.
Pam Duncan-Lancey.
Thank you, Cabinet Secretary, and forgive the length of time it's taken me to get to the point. I was looking to see which number of amendment in the list. Amendment 86 asks the government to set out any additional steps the Scottish ministers have taken to alleviate the cost of living. And whilst I recognise that defining something like the cost of living could be expansive, and I'd welcome a potential amendment at stage three if the government were willing to look at what that could look like. But if the government is not minded to define the cost of living, which I have to say I find odd in a bill that names the cost of living, would the government consider at least reporting as part of the mechanism within this bill, so that we can understand across this chamber all of the measures the government has taken to alleviate the cost of living during the period that the rent freeze is in place? Not just so we can help scrutinise the legislation, but also so that other people outside this chamber can understand that the government appreciates the totality of their hardship.
Cabinet Secretary.
Okay. Well, first of all, on the general definition of cost of living, it covers the general cost of goods and services viewed as necessary to maintain an average or minimum standard of living. That is the common understanding of cost of living. The point Pam Duncan-Lancey makes about what action this government is taking on cost of living, I mean, we've set out already, now we can debate the point she made about the £3 billion. The point I've made to Pam Duncan-Lancey previously is that something doesn't have to have been announced last month in order to be impacting positively on the cost of living of household incomes. If someone requires a prescription next week, it's a prescription they're not going to have to pay for, whereas they would be paying £9.25, I think, per item if they were based in England. And of course, that helps with household incomes. So we have to look at the package of cost of living support in the round, and we will continue to do that very briefly.
Pam Duncan-Lancey.
Thank you. I'm grateful to the Cabinet Secretary for this and to other members of the chamber, because I appreciate it's late. The point I'm making about the £3 billion is not asking to compare what the Scottish government is spending in Scotland in terms of prescriptions in comparison to what's happening in England. I'm asking for the Scottish government to set out what it is doing now that the cost of living crisis is biting, that is specifically about getting us through this cost of living, rather than package all the measures together that we expect in Scotland, and some of which were put in motion by a Labour government in Scotland.
The point is it doesn't matter when they were put in place. They're impacting positively on household incomes to help people with the cost of living. You can't, it would be ridiculous to only count things that were announced in the last year that impact on the cost of living. That would exclude so many important elements that actually help with family budgets. Now, of course, we always want to look at what more we can do. We've made a commitment to look through the Emergency Budget Review to look at what more we can do, but it can't always be about what is just newly announced. It has to be looked in the round of everything that is being done. And £1 billion of that £3 billion of support is only available in Scotland. So that is resources that this government has put in place, not available anywhere else. So of course, that has to be counted. But, look, coming back to the points here in terms of the amendments, we have tried in this set of amendments to support those amendments that we think will help to get to the point of the nub of what members are looking for here, which is why we are content to accept Amendment 85 from Paul Sweeney and Amendment 87 from Matt Griffin. But we can't accept the remainder of the amendments in this grouping and urge the members not to press them. Thank you.
Thank you. I call Mark Griffin to wind up and press or withdraw Amendment 80.
Thanks, Convenor. I welcome the Cabinet Secretary's comments and support for Amendments 85 and 87 in this group. I do have a degree of sympathy for Amendment 81 in the name of Jamie Green, in the sense that it gets to the heart of the issue that has essentially plagued the housing market for longer than we've been here, in that there is a lack of data on rents, there is a lack of data on rent increases within tenancies, there is just a dearth of data within that sector for us to come to a reasoned assessment of whether a policy position is right or wrong. And I appreciate the motivation behind that amendment. On Amendment 80, I think it's fair to say that the subject of the impact of a cap on the finances of housing associations has been one of the key points raised in the debate, not by me, not just by me, but right across the chamber. An amendment looking specifically to assess the financial impact on housing associations, and particularly their funding for the Affordable Housing Supply Programme, I think, would be key. It's an example of government taking good action, which we support, in the short term to get us through the cost of living crisis, being at odds with our long-term ambition to boost the number of affordable houses that are built. Now, I heard what the Cabinet Secretary said about the work that was ongoing, and I welcome that. I also heard what the Cabinet Secretary said about the measures that I am suggesting being included in a comprehensive review that would be carried out anyway. And so I'll just gently say, if it's going to be carried out anyway and included within that review, then there would be no harm in supporting it, and giving that assurance across the chamber that it will be, that the financial viability of registered social landlords will be seriously taken account of, not just in here, but give comfort to the sector as well, and press Amendment 80.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment 80 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No, yes.
The committee is not agreed, therefore we'll move to vote. Members should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 80 in the name of Mark Griffin is yes 50, no 63. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 81 in the name of Jamie Green, already debated with Amendment 80. Jamie Green to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that Amendment 81 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed, therefore we'll move to vote. Members should cast their votes now. The vote is now closed. Point of order, Sharon Dowey.
I would have voted yes.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. The result of the vote on Amendment number 81 in the name of Jamie Green is yes 48, no 66. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 82 in the name of Jeremy Balfour, already debated with Amendment 74. Jeremy Balfour to move or not move?
Not to move, Convenor.
Thank you. Okay. The question is that Section 6 and Section 7 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
Yes.
I call Amendment 83 in the name of Pam Duncan-Lancey, already debated with Amendment 80. Pam Duncan-Lancey to move or not move?
No.
The question is that Amendment 83 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed, therefore we'll move to vote. Members should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 83 in the name of Pam Duncan-Lancey is yes 21, no 93. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 84 in the name of Pam Duncan-Lancey, already debated with Amendment 80. Pam Duncan-Lancey to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that Amendment 84 be agreed to? Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed, therefore we'll move to vote. Members should cast their votes now. A member should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. Point of order, Finlay Carson.
I was unable to connect to the voting system. I would have voted no.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. Point of order, Stephanie Callahan.
I don't think my vote's gone through. I would have voted no.
Thank you. We'll ensure that's recorded. The result of the vote on Amendment number 84 in the name of Pam Duncan-Glansey is yes 20, no 92. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 85 in the name of Paul Sweeney, already debated with Amendment 80. Paul Sweeney to move or not move?
Move, Presiding Officer.
The question is that Amendment 85 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
I call Amendment 86 in the name of Pam Duncan-Glansey, already debated with Amendment 80. Pam Duncan-Glansey to move or not move?
No.
The question is that Amendment 86 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed, therefore we'll move to vote. A member should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 86 in the name of Pam Duncan-Glansey is yes 21, no 94. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 87 in the name of Mark Griffin, already debated with Amendment 80. Mark Griffin to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that Amendment 87 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
I call Amendment 88 in the name of Jamie Green, already debated with Amendment 80. Jamie Green to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment 89 in the name of Jamie Green, already debated with Amendment 80. Jamie Green to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment 90 in the name of Pam Duncan-Glansey, already debated with Amendment 80. Pam Duncan-Glansey to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that Amendment 90 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed. We'll move to vote and members should cast their votes now. The result of the vote on Amendment number 90 in the name of Pam Duncan-Glansey is yes 50, no 66. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 91 in the name of Pam Duncan-Glansey, already debated with Amendment 80. My apologies. Let's just rewind very slightly. The question is that Section 8 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are. I now call Amendment 91 in the name of Pam Duncan-Glansey, already debated with Amendment 80. Pam Duncan-Glansey to move or not move?
Not moved.
I call Amendment 92 in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment 80. Edward Mountain to move or not move?
Moved.
The question is that Amendment 92 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
The committee is not agreed. We'll move to vote and members should cast their votes now. The vote is closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 92 in the name of Edward Mountain is yes 28, no 85. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. We move to the group entitled Ensuring Resources for Tribunals and I call Amendment 93 in the name of Miles Briggs in a group on its own. Miles Briggs to move and speak to Amendment 93.
Thank you, Convena. My Amendment 93 looks towards providing additional resources for tribunals. We are concerned around the impact this bill will have and the impact being potentially significant. And we already know that tribunals face an eight- to nine-month waiting time and backlog of work. So what we're doing today is calling on ministers to provide financial resources and assistance to our tribunals, including grants, loans, guarantees and indemnities, over and above the current financial year settlement, should first-tier tribunals or tribunals see a significant increase in the numbers of cases coming forward. I hope ministers will look at this as an important part of making sure that the system will work for any landlords and tenants as well.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. I note that Edward Mountain would wish to intervene. Mr. Mountain?
Thank you, Deputy Convena. I just try to speak on this point because I think it is seriously important that first tribunals are up and first-tier tribunals are up and working properly because it will prevent problems getting worse. Now, my colleague, Miles Briggs, has mentioned about getting correct resources there. I think it would also be extremely helpful and I think the government should look at reporting on the efficiency of first-tier tribunals. I've asked questions on this in the Parliament before and they haven't been able to tell me how long the waiting list is on first tribunals. I'm told today in Glasgow, as I've said earlier, it's between six and nine months. That frankly isn't good enough and I do believe that the government should be conceding to Mr. Briggs's request here.
Thank you, Mr. Mountain. I call the Minister.
Thank you, Convena. As Miles Briggs sets out, Amendment 93 places a requirement for ministers to ensure adequate resources are available for the first-tier tribunal should the provisions in Part One result in a significant increase to the number of cases being had. I don't believe this amendment is necessary. Where a change is made to a case type in the Housing and Property Chamber of the First-Tier Tribunal, the Scottish Government fully funds the cost by end-year transfer based on a spending forecast agreed between the Scottish Government and the Scottish Courts and Tribunal Service. Once caseload has reached a settled state, a baseline transfer of costs is agreed. This is a standard approach across all first-tier tribunal chambers. Private rented sector case costs have not yet been baselined. We expect to meet the Scottish Courts and Tribunal Service shortly to agree a transfer of costs for the remainder of this financial year, including those as a result of the legislation via the spring budget revision. That process is adequate to meet the needs of the tribunal and I don't believe this amendment is necessary. I urge Mr. Briggs not to press it.
I call Miles Briggs to wind up and to press or withdraw Amendment 93.
Thank you, Convena. I hear what the Minister says. Given that the government are now proposing a review before March 31st, at March 31st date, I'm not sure he necessarily said whether or not the potential additional work tribunals will face if this is extended beyond March 31st and how that will then be financially supported. Would that be on a six-month review or for the next financial year, the government give resources from April?
Minister?
I'm grateful to the member giving way. What I've attempted to do is give a description of how it is the Scottish Government and the Scottish Courts and Tribunal Service reach agreement about the funding of these processes every year. That process will be unchanged.
No, I fully understand that. I think my concern is, given the additional work which tribunals could face and given the fact that they already have an eight-to-nine-month waiting time and backlog, this is not going to help the system if they're financially not in a good place. So I tend to press the amendment and hope ministers will take on board the need to make sure that the tribunal system has to work or the system will just collapse.
I note Mr. Briggs is intending to press the amendment. The question therefore is that Amendment 93 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. There will be a division. Members should vote now. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on Amendment number 93 in the name of Miles Briggs is yes 50, no 65. The amendment is therefore not agreed. The question is that Section 9 is agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are all agreed? I now move to the next grouping, Open Market Rent. I call Amendment 94 in the name of Edward Mountain, grouped with Amendments 95, 97, 98 and 100. I call on Edward Mountain to move Amendment 94 and to speak to all amendments in the group.
Thank you, Presiding Officer, and I do move Amendment 94. The point of these amendments are that at the conclusion of this emergency legislation, that the first-tier tribunals take into account the market value of rents. Now, that is the whole point of the legislation in the 84, 88 and 16 Act, to allow the market to set the rent. Now, a lot of people would say that rents have got inflated in some areas. I have to say, that is not my experience of 35 years in the market of working in the Highlands, where it has certainly been a definition of an open-market rent would be the best value achieved with a willing landlord and a willing tenant. Both sides have to be willing to enter into the agreement. My fear, Convena, is that by the government not including this and by saying that they will determine what matters need to be taken into account, they will be distorting the market, which will then cause houses to be taken out of the rental sector, which has been alluded to by my colleagues in earlier conversations. I mean, if you cannot get a rent that covers the costs for a property on a long-term let, which I have to say in my case is what I try and achieve because I think there's values in long-term lets, then you have to look at other vehicles such as short-term lets and Airbnb. Frankly, I don't think that's going to help people live in communities and I know the Minister has views on that, some of which I support. So I am asking that the government consider including the word 'open-market rent' when this emergency has passed, which at the moment, they have specifically excluded. Thank you, Deputy Convena.
Thank you, Mr. Mountain. I now call the Minister.
I'm grateful to the member for being clear about his intentions behind this. I have to say, there are some issues he raises which do relate to the longer-term arguments about the future of the rental sector. I would have to say that from my experience as a regional MSP for Glasgow, I would say that there are a great many people who would disagree with him, that the market is not leading to inflated rents. And indeed, I have many constituents who are paying more for a rental property than they would for even a repayment mortgage on the same property, even though the rights and security of tenure and so on that they have as a tenant are less than a homeowner has. So I think there is a long-term argument very clearly about whether the open-market rent approach is one that secures what the Scottish Government wants to secure, which is that human right for adequate housing to be met for everyone. But as I say, some of this is a longer-term discussion and will be taken forward through the work that we're doing under the New Deal for Tenants and permanent legislation in the future. As for this emergency legislation, it is very clear that if and when circumstances change and we reach the view that the emergency measures are no longer proportionate and no longer justified by circumstance and necessity, we will have to move away from them. It is essential that we have a bridge away from that process rather than just a direct return to open-market rents. All of the amendments in this group would essentially remove the ability to modify the rent adjudication process so as to prevent a cliff edge. And if we took that approach, there is a genuine possibility that the ending of the emergency measures would lead to a frankly unsustainable position for a great many people right around the country, not just in areas like Glasgow and Edinburgh, but including in areas that the member represents. It's not enough, in my view, to say that a tenancy that's agreed at what It's not enough, in my view, to say that a tenancy that's agreed at whatever rent is agreed freely between the landlord and the tenant because a great many people in our society are unable to afford owner occupation because of the inflated house prices that we see. And the reason why the Scottish Government is so determined to press ahead with the increase in provision of social housing is that a great many people have found that unavailable. And so the private rented sector, for far too many people, is their only choice. They have no freedom to make a different choice. They have only the option of accepting what the private rented housing market offers them and for many people, that is good-quality housing at an affordable price. But for far too many others, it is housing that is of poorer energy performance standards than the rest of the housing stock and is unaffordable. The emergency measures that we're taking are about these current circumstances, but it is absolutely essential that we retain the power to modify the rent adjudication process, again, on a temporary basis as a bridge out of the emergency measures. So I strongly urge Parliament to reject all of the amendments in this group.
Thank you, Minister. I call on Edward Mountain to wind up and to press or withdraw Amendment 94.
Thank you very much, Deputy Convenor, and I'll keep this short. I mean, what I'm feared is that we are using a sledgehammer to crack a nut and we are making huge decisions on generalised comments in relation to some parts of Scotland to other parts of Scotland. I think that's why we need to consider what the open-market rent would be. I don't think my amendments suggest that it has to go to an open-market. I'm just saying that they should be considered. And the danger, of course, Minister, as you well know, is that if we don't give some stability to the housing market and the private rental market, we will see the lack of investment in that market. And there is certainly a very large builder who is located close to Elgin, who has already put on hold development because of the legislation that's going on in this Parliament today. So, Presiding Officer, I will press my amendment and I conclude at that.
Thank you, Mr Mountain. The question is, let Amendment 94 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are not agreed, there will be a division and members should cast their votes now. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on Amendment Number 94 in the name of Edward Mountain is yes 28, no 86. There were no abstentions and the amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 95 in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment 94. I call on Edward Mountain to move or not move.
Deputy Convenor, on the basis that all of these amendments are linked to one specific point, I don't intend to press any of them, so I will not move Amendment 95.
Thank you, Mr Mountain. I call Amendment 96 in the name... Oh, I'm terribly sorry, I have gone ahead of myself. I would now turn to the next grouping, which is Additional Scrutiny of Draft Regulations. I call Amendment 96 in the name of Miles Briggs, grouped with Amendment 99. I call on Miles Briggs to move Amendment 96 and to speak to both amendments in the group. Mr Briggs?
Thank you, Convenor. And before we reach Mr Cole Hamilton's crowning glory today, I wanted to bring forward an attempt to get some additional opportunity for Parliament to look at the unintended consequences of this legislation because Jamie Green's Amendment 81 was incredibly important to provide real-world data on the impact this will have. We know the sector is talking about unintended consequences of this bill. We want the Scottish Government to look towards providing this information as soon as possible as well. That's therefore why my amendment looks towards this being provided before the end of this year, so we can look at the actual impact and the data which decisions will be taken under by ministers, including around the extension of this legislation or to increase the cap further than the current March 31st date and also when these emergency powers will finally end. Now, we believe that a draft of the plans ministers will develop around this should be published before the end of the year and are asking that to take place so that Parliament can properly scrutinise future plans. What data will be used by ministers to take decisions to then increase people's rent in the coming parts of this bill? So I hope members will look towards how that will provide far more scrutiny around this regulations for Parliament.
Thank you, Mr Briggs. I now call the minister.
Thank you, Convenor. The effect of these amendments is to require a draft of the proposed regulations three months before the expiry of the bill and regulations made under the current Schedule Three are subject to the affirmative procedure. That means they will be subject to 54 days of parliamentary scrutiny before they are made. Given that the provisions of Schedule Three will apply in anticipation of the expiry of the emergency measures, it's envisaged that any regulations made under Schedule Three would be introduced 54 days before the expiry of those measures. Therefore, this amendment is unnecessary. And in addition, it may not be possible to fulfil the requirements of this amendment because we don't know when the emergency measures will expire. I'm sure that the Conservative members will be keener than anyone. If circumstances change and the government is no longer able to demonstrate the ongoing necessity and proportionality of these measures, they will want us to expire them as soon as that becomes possible. And so it wouldn't be appropriate to place this additional requirement for advanced publication of a draft, given that it may not be possible to do that in time for expiry in those circumstances. So I don't believe this would be workable and I would urge the member not to press this amendment. I would want to stress that we are keen to make sure that the decisions and policy development around these regulations is transparent. And I can commit to publishing a draft for consultation and working with Parliament and stakeholders on their development and ensuring that opportunity is as significant as possible. I can't support the specific measures in this amendment.
I call on Miles Briggs to wind up and to press or withdraw Amendment 96.
Thank you, Convenor, and I've heard what the minister has to say and certainly from the work of the local government and Housing Committee, we are concerned at the total lack of data around this and the real need for us to develop that. Now, I've heard what the minister has said and happy to withdraw these amendments, but I hope minister has understood the views across Parliament that we need to see how this future decision around this will actually be taken with real-world data and the unintended consequences which potentially this is going to have. Because I think it is very important that Parliament is not taking future decisions without that data across parties being provided.
Miles Briggs seeks to withdraw Amendment Number 96. Does any member object? No member objects. Amendment 96 is withdrawn. I now call Amendment 97 in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment 94. Edward Mountain, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. I now call Amendment 98 in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment 94. Edward Mountain, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. I now call Amendment 99 in the name of Miles Briggs, already debated with Amendment 96. Miles Briggs, to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. I now call Amendment 100 in the name of Edward Mountain, already debated with Amendment 94. Edward Mountain, to move or not move?
Not moved, Deputy Convenor.
The question is that Schedule Three be agreed to. Are we all agreed? The question is that Section 10 be agreed to. Are we all agreed? I now move to the last grouping, which is Crown Consent, and I call Amendment 101 in the name of Alex Co-Hamilton, in a group on its own. I call on Alex Co-Hamilton to move and speak to Amendment 101.
Thank you very much, Deputy Convenor, and members will be pleased to hear. I've been slashing through my remarks, taking paragraphs out left, right and centre. What you have to do to get a clap in this place, I don't know. Deputy Convenor, this bill represents a first for this Parliament but also for our new king. It will be the first whole piece of legislation to transit through the Scottish Parliament to which his signature will be affixed. Last year, The Guardian, in collaboration with the Scottish Liberal Democrats, uncovered that the monarch's lawyers had vetted at least 67 pieces of legislation that affected Crown property and powers. Before the summer, a Scottish government memo indicated that it was, quote, "almost certain draft laws were quietly changed to address Crown concerns and to secure its approval." We don't know what changes were made or even which bills were amended. Now, looking to the future, this is the first bill which requires Crown consent under King Charles III. This is the first time that new procedures introduced by the Presiding Officer and Scottish Ministers apiece will have been applied to a bill. As a result of those changes, it will be confirmed that Crown consent has been sought and agreed. That is expected at Stage Three, where I presume ministers will simply confirm as much in a single sentence. However, I believe that Parliament also deserves to know what specific changes, if any, have or will be made to this legislation at the request of the Crown's lawyers. My amendment would require Scottish ministers to prepare a report doing three things or covering three things, a summary of any discussions, details of any changes requested and the government's response to those requests. The period of three months allows the Parliament to reflect on the content of this report prior to any potential extension of powers in March 2023. The language also, you'll notice, of my amendment reflects that contained in Rule 9.11 of Standing Orders. I think, Deputy Convenor, that people deserve to know if changes to law are being discussed or agreed. I want to end by wishing the new king well. He carries within him the goodwill of the country and our party and with that too, the goodwill and the expectations of his own stated hope for modernisation and transparency in this amendment, we will help him to do exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Cole Hamilton. I now would ask Minister George Adam to respond.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. Presiding Officer, it's been a long afternoon and longer evening. I'm going to try to be brief and at the same time try and make sure that Mr Cole Hamilton's concerns are addressed. I fear I may fail in both right enough, but I'm going to try. So as all members are aware, the Scotland Act 1998, the UK Act which provides for the current evolution settlement, has required the Scottish Parliament and governments since 1999 to seek Crown consent. If the same bill would need such consent were it passed in the UK Parliament. As required by the Scotland Act, the Scottish Parliament Standing Orders set out the rules for determining this for each bill. Crown consent is required where a Scottish bill impacts the private property or interests of the sovereign. Where that requirement is identified, the Scottish Government is required to obtain that consent. This is not a choice being taken by the Scottish Government. As this bill contains provisions affecting private residential tenancies, which could affect residential tenancies on His Majesty's private estates and those on land forming part of the Scottish Crown estate, Crown consent is required. In order for the necessary consent to be provided, a copy of the bill has been shared with the palace. As required by Standing Orders, the King's consent to this bill is expected to be signified to Parliament ahead of bill being debated at Stage Three. This process has not changed and is the process which has been followed by each Scottish Government since 1999, including previous Labour/Liberal Democrat governments. However, to make matters more transparent, Presiding Officer, Parliament was made aware in Monday that the Scottish Government will from now on make clear in bills accompanying documents how provisions in the bill apply to the Crown and why the Crown consent is required. We are the first Scottish Government to make this additional information available to Parliament on a bill's introduction. This will ensure that MSPs have full information on the introduction of a bill to enable them to scrutinise and debate this throughout the passage of the bill. It has always been open to MSPs and committees to raise questions as to whether, why the Crown consent is required during any of the bill's parliamentary passages. This has not changed. Members will also be aware, it remains Scottish Government policy that legislation should apply to the Crown in the same way as it does to any other person. I would like to confirm that this bill applies to the Crown in the same way as it applies to anyone else. This amendment seeks to require the government to report on various discussions that have been held and discussions that have been taken after the bill has passed. I would like to make clear that bills before they are published may change for all sorts of reasons based on different discussions with stakeholders. It's difficult to see the purpose as served by requiring the government to provide a report on these matters in relation to the King after the bill has passed. The question, Presiding Officer, for the Parliament on this bill and in future bills is whether or not it is content with the way in which a bill applies to the Crown. In this case, whether the Parliament is content that the bill applies to the Crown in the same way as anyone else. For these reasons, Presiding Officer, I cannot support Amendment 101 and I would just remember not to press to a vote.
Thank you, Minister. I now call Alex Co-Hamilton to wind up and to press or withdraw Amendment 101.
Thank you very much, Deputy Convenor. I listened to the minister's remarks. I wasn't making a partisan point, I think he thought I was. This is about scrutiny and transparency, it's not about who's in charge at any period in history. Transparency and scrutiny are pillars of our democracy. They have indeed been championed by our new king. And Parliament has the opportunity tonight to agree upon a principle. I believe basically, in simple terms, Deputy Convenor, that people have a right to know when changes are made to the laws of our land or agreements struck, particularly when those have happened because of discussions between ministers and the Crown. I believe that should apply whether changes are made before a bill arrives in Parliament, while it is passing through our committees and chamber, or when adjustments are made in the years to come through secondary legislation. But this amendment and with this bill, which marks a first in a number of respects, the Scottish Government could agree to produce this simple report and with it a signal, the signal that it supports the principle that both Parliament and the public deserve to know how their laws are made and who is influencing them. I move the amendment in my name and I wish to press.
Thank you, Mr Co-Hamilton. The question is, let Amendment 101 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are not agreed, there will be a division. Members should cast their votes now. The vote is now closed. The result of the vote on Amendment Number 101 in the name of Alex Co-Hamilton is yes 22, no 93. There were no abstentions and the amendment is therefore not agreed. The question is that Sections 11 to 13 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
The question is that the long title be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
That ends Stage Two consideration and I would notify members that the amendment deadline for Stage Three will be 9am tomorrow, Thursday 6 October. Given that the Stage Two consideration of the bill has now concluded, and that one concluded some time ago, this meeting of the whole committee of the Parliament is now concluded and I close that meeting and there will now be a short suspension before we move on to the outstanding items to be dealt with tonight.